Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of May 4th. If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. If you took a look at the agenda, there is a whole bunch that we're going to go through tonight, so I ask my colleagues' indulgence. We're going to move this right along. But because there's a lot, we're just going to add one more thing, because I thought it was appropriate. This is a commendation, and this is for our police chief, and he has no idea this is happening right now. Our police chief, Josh Canario, was selected as a Man of the Year who makes a difference. In fact, last year, it was Vice Chair Tim Sweeney. This year, it was our chief. And I'm just going to read this, because it's going to take two seconds. And you can see how he's smiling, because he didn't know this was coming. "Chief Josh Canario, in proud recognition of his selection as the man who makes a difference for 2016 by the Women's Resource Center, as duly elected representatives and the citizens of the town of Bristol, the Honorable Town Administrator and the Honorable Town Council of said town of Bristol, State of Rhode Island, and Providence Plantations individually, collectively, and by these presents, extend greetings and offer sincerest congratulations to Chief Canario. We applaud his great honor and extend to the chief and his family greetings." Lou, you always like to put these words in here for me. We're going to skip right over that one. "Upon his most auspicious occasion," and this is signed by myself, Vice Chair Tim Sweeney, Mary Perella, Councilman, Edward Stewart, Councilman, Halsey Harrishoff, Councilman, and Louis Cherillo, Town Clerk. If we could give the chief a round of applause, please.
Thank you. As I always say, I forgive, I don't forget. Congratulations.
In Bristol, we have no shortage of good news, but this one was particularly good. So congratulations, chief. Nice job. Nice job. As you can see, we also have a presentation here. We're going to move that forward in just a moment, but I'd like to just get the minutes and the consent agenda approved. Please.
Chairman, members of the Town Council, the first item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second, with moving H1 forward, is that okay? And I make a motion that I-13 be convened in executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then also, we have submission of minutes of previous meetings, items A1, 2, and 3.
Motion to approve A1, A2, and A3.
Second.
So motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we had a motion to move H1 forward. H1 is Councilman Stewart's agenda item for a request to have the Rhode Island DOT share some information with this council and the people of Bristol. I know that they're here, because there's a nice big old screen over here. Who's with us this evening? Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name's Steve Prestol, I'm the Chief Civil Engineer in the Traffic Engineering Section. And with me is Maureen McHugh. She's the Project Manager for this H-SIP Medicom project. So she'll brief you and answer any questions you have, as well as I'll be here to assist and also hit the button, so.
Welcome to both of you, and thank you for taking the time to share what progress there is.
Absolutely.
Steve, you wouldn't happen to have any vamp music while we wait for this, do you? No? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Steve mentioned, my name's Maureen McHugh. I'm the Project Manager for this Medicom Avenue project. I'm going to start with just a brief overview of what the project entails and how we came up with the improvements that we're going to build. So this group of intersections is part of our Highway Safety Improvement Program. It's abbreviated H-SIP. We take high crash locations and study them to determine improvements that would reduce the crash frequency. Intersections at Tupelo Street, Michael Drive, Chestnut Street, and Anawam Scott Drive, and Bayview Avenue were selected for final design based on the need and the expected benefit. A lot of the crashes at these locations were rear ends, so improvements selected included new traffic signal systems, pavement widening to install turn lanes, as well as left-turn signal phases, which would separate turning traffic from through traffic, which could be a reason for the rear-end crashes at some of the approaches where there's only one lane right now, as well as pavement, new pavement within the project limits, and new signing and striping. And the project's schedule, we're in the final stages of design. Our real estate section has started their appraisal process and is in the process of reaching out to affected property owners. We anticipate advertising this contract in October of this year, and construction would start in the spring of next year, in 2017. We're currently finalizing the construction schedule, but the whole project is expected to be complete by 2018. And I just have a few slides showing the signing and striping. It kind of gives the best overview of what the intersections will look like when they're done. So this first intersection is Tupelo Street at Michael Drive. You can see there's widening on the northwest side of Medicom Avenue to provide the turn lane southbound, the left turn lane and the right turn lane, and then a separate through lane, as well as the left turn lane northbound and a through lane northbound. And then we're doing a left turn lane on Tupelo Street, as well as a right turn lane on Michael Drive. The next intersection's Chestnut Street, and there's widening again on the northwest side of Medicom Avenue. This would provide that right turn lane that you see, as well as a through lane. And there's currently a left turn lane northbound on Medicom Avenue that would remain, and we would keep, we would install a left turn lane on Chestnut Street, as well as provide signal access to the Plaza driveway that currently comes out in the middle of the intersection and signaledized. So that driveway would now come out with a signal phase. They'd have a loop detector and everything. The next intersection at Anawam Scott Drive, we would widen on the northeast side of Medicom Avenue to install a right turn lane northbound, as well as a left turn lane going into Anawam Scott Drive, which isn't there right now. And the last intersection at Bayview Avenue, there's widening on the northwest side of Medicom Avenue again, and that would include a separate left turn lane into the CVS and Cumberland Farms Plaza, a through lane and a right turn lane, as well as a left turn lane northbound, and you can see the left turn lane on Bayview Avenue, and a separate through lane. Any questions or want to go back to any specific intersections?
I would say there's lots of questions. Yeah, I know one that came up for me was, you said there was a potential real estate purchase. Could you talk to us about that and how that would affect anyone?
Our real, we have right-of-way plans that have been submitted to our real estate section. I'm not very involved in the process, but we have real estate appraisers that look at the takings or if there's easements needed, and they appraise them, and then they set up meetings with any affected property owners, usually by letter first.
Could you give Steve a microphone?
Sure.
Diane, or do you mind? Oh, you got one? Thank you. Thank you.
The only thing I would add is, it's all strip-taking. It's not acquiring a whole property or a house or anything like that. It's just along the edge line to widen the road slightly. So it's, you know, anything, and the property owner gets compensated, obviously, for the loss of the land as well, for his parking. They get compensated for that as well. So it's, when you hear real estate actions, it's not condemning a whole property.
Okay. I gotta tell you, on the surface, I'm picturing Friday at 4:30, 5 o'clock or so, and not being able to move at all on Medicom. And this, this makes me smile that potentially we could have actual progress, whether it's at 40 or 30 miles an hour, whatever it is.
Right.
You can actually get to a place and not be frustrated with that.
And that is the big improvement, is providing those left turn lanes. So as it is now, you know, a car is making a left, it blocks up all the through traffic, because they're not getting through. Now, when you provide a left turn lane and a phase, you're efficiently getting them out of the flow of traffic, so traffic can move freely that's going straight, or right turns are obviously a lot easier than left, so. So the real big improvement out here, you'll see a lot of, reduction in congestion will lead to less rear-end crashes, you know, and you'll see the reduction in congestion, which will be very noticeable, I think, when the project is done.
Thank you, Councilmembers, for getting this on the agenda.
Agreed. Nice job.
I wanted to know, in regards to the pedestrians and how it's going to change, because I know around Bayview Avenue, there's a lot of Roger Williams students, and how is that going to change for them crossing the street? And maybe we could talk about the other intersections as well.
Sure. Steve, do you want to go back?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
To the Bayview point first. So the crosswalks you see are striped across all four sides of the intersection, which right now I think it's only across two. So all of those would have pedestrian push buttons, as well as audible pedestrian. When you press it, you would hear it.
Excellent.
Every intersection will have the audible.
Yep. That was my next question. Perfect.
And ramps, new ramps.
You said ADA wheelchair ramps?
Right.
Okay. That will be included. Councilman.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming down, and I think it's very important to convey to the public and let them be well aware, because even the last big project here in the town of Bristol, the Hope Street project, went very well because of the communication with the residents in the town. And we also had a project manager that was very in tune and on the ground here at all times, along with our Community Development Department, which is very intricate in this process also. So, and that's why I think going forward, the safety is paramount, obviously, like you said. But an issue here in Bristol that we've been experiencing for years, that we've been trying to address, is traffic congestion in Medicom Avenue. 136 is probably the only thing that we can alleviate, so it's great to see that you're targeting the big arteries and those big intersects. That's going to make a big difference. In a discussion with Stephen tonight, since this project's going forward and the DOT's going to be here, and there's a lot of planning involved and coordination with all the departments, I just still discussed any other turning lanes that can be possible. Realistically, we talked about this topic of to widen Medicom would just be astronomical, and I don't need to go to a statewide planning to get an answer to say, between easements, real estate purchases, and utilities, in a day and age, I think the burden would be too much. But if we can, and he said that we can have a discussion of what's important to this town, because he's absolutely correct, that if we were to add more center lanes at each cross street or side street along Medicom to keep the traffic going, you're going to lose part of the shoulders on each side of Medicom. So it's a matter of, do you want the shoulder, or how much of a shoulder do you need, or do you want more center lanes? And is it feasible to working in? And that's why it's good that we're talking about it now, with the projection of the design and going forward to 2018, and have that conversation once and for all, because once the overlay goes down and the striping, you know, we're not going to come back to that. So that's why I think it's important, I want you to be here and convey it to the public. And I think going forward, if we can have more coordination going forward, so the people are, you know, find out, maybe a little input from them. But to me, I'm looking forward to this project, and I think it's really going to help the Medicom corridor, so.
Anybody else?
I can tell you that we've often said that Bristol is not just downtown, and this is a wonderful way of improving that area, both in business and obviously residential. And I know that you've mentioned some accidents that have happened. Certainly, I'm sure the chief could speak to this, but it would seem that if you're not trying to take chances to get in, everything kind of calms down a little bit. And when it calms down, hopefully, we have less issues, so.
If I may just add, we have our County Water Authority on our agenda tonight. They already started, I just saw some pipes already by the tank on Medicom. National Grid was just in, as you know, on Medicom. So we hear it time and time again when people are on 136, what's going on on 136 with all these trenches? There's going to be another trench. So we just ask that the residents and visitors that come into Bristol be very patient. The road is going to be in a disfunct state of affairs for quite some time until this whole project gets done, and it'll come out beautiful, so. Thank you.
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just have another quick question. I see it all the time around, and it's when people don't talk to one another, especially like National Grid, or Bristol County Water Authority, or other departments. And what happens is the road gets torn up multiple times. And I was just wondering, in your scope, are you going to be reaching out to Bristol County Water Authority and National Grid to see if they're having any projects that need to happen while you guys have that road exposed? Because it seems like it gets torn up and then put back, and it ends up being a pothole within, by the end of the year, you know? It's just, in my opinion, so.
Yeah, we've had a few utility meetings with National Grid, Verizon, and Bristol County Water. They're doing work right now near Anawam Scott for the Veterans Home. They're trying to get all of that done. Prior to my project, National Grid Gas as well, for work related to my project, wants to go out there later this summer to get their work done before my project, so that we're not digging up the road and then digging it back up again. So we're trying to keep it as close as possible. So they're going to finish up by this fall, and then my project would start in the spring.
Okay.
So we have been coordinating with the utilities.
Perfect.
And we certainly, as the town, will make sure that the people of Bristol will be well-informed as this progress, as progress continues with it. And if you have any questions, certainly you can reach out to us, you can reach out through the Administrator's Office, through Community Development, through the Police Department. All of us are available to answer questions, but as you've said, this won't start until 2017, so it's not this year. So we've got some time, and there's a lot of input that'll happen to make sure that things go nice and smooth. Is there anything else?
No.
No?
Thank you again.
We appreciate the effort that you put into this, and we're looking forward to the outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
The first item on the agenda is the public hearing for the Bristol Buffet LLC, doing business as Bristol Buffet, request counsel consideration for a Class B V Limited Intoxicated Beverage License.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Please. When you get up, if you could state your name and address for the record. Yes, please. Welcome.
Hello, welcome all. My name is Cynthia Esposito.
Could you move the mic downs?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Thank you.
I, my property, a butts, Bristol Buffet, Ben Lute's place. And what I can tell you, he has made this place so impeccable. I mean, he has cleaned up the whole area. I don't know if anyone has been inside of it. It's completely changed. It's very nice. I've been there, had dinner there, wonderful food, and I think it actually raised the property around the neighborhood of having his development there. He's cleaned up that place so much, and I am in favor for it. Would you like to ask me any questions?
You've done this before, haven't you?
Yes, I have.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town, no, you don't want to yet. You haven't created it yet. The next one, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is C1. This is ordinance 2016-03. The council will recall, it had a workshop recently on this particular ordinance, and the suggestion was made that there should be some further explanatory language added. The solicitor provides a suggested amendment to the ordinance to include what he terms a whereas clause.
I believe you did, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, it was, it was Lou's suggestion to add those whereas, but we came up with them, but he suggested.
Yeah, so to remind everyone what this is, this is a second reading of an ordinance for alcohol use on town property, or more specifically, what is okay and what's not okay. We had a workshop that we kind of dove quite deeply into this, and it was suggested that there should be some clear language right in the beginning of the ordinance, which is, and I'm just going to read a portion of it real quick, is that the town of Bristol does not encourage public consumption of alcohol on town property or private property, but nonetheless, the consumption of alcohol on town property may be appropriate in certain fairs, festivals, and other town-sanctioned special events. And the rationale behind that was to say that this council is not promoting this, but we've had requests for it, and we felt, as a whole, that it should be a more consistent policy for everyone, so you can understand what's necessary, and you can decide whether or not you want to take the next step, just by the application itself. So that's a nice overview.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the second reading for adoption.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Go ahead. Discussion.
They're revised. I don't have it in mind. I have two.
You don't have C1A?
No. No. Thanks.
Actually, well, well, you can look, you can have this one, because I already know my.
Oh, thanks.
You can have, no, I already, you can hold on to it.
You all sat?
Yeah. Eddie, you can have mine. I mean, I think it's a better version, maybe it's just easier and cleaner to read than the prior one, which had sort of a draft of, you know, Newport's basic use of public property. It was basically their parks request, with a small component about the alcohol, and then it went on and other pieces. So I found this easier to follow after the workshop, and I do think it's important to have the whereas clauses in, just to preamble, because one of the concerns that was raised at the workshop is, if you have this license, you know, out there and you can come in and request it, does that then give people license or encouragement to be requesting the use of alcohol at the parks all the time? And I don't think any of us wants to see a situation where there are all kinds of events taking place on our public parks that are meant for families and for individuals, for recreational use, to be taken up with, you know, multiple private events. So I think that this is a good version of this. I think it's easier to follow, and so I do support it, and hopefully, it will just lay out that framework for those that are interested in using it, which are nonprofits primarily, and our own town government organizations. Am I correct when I say that?
I'd like, I'd like to echo Councilwoman Perella's thoughts on this, and to the Chairman's point, too. We're just revising the policy to protect each and every resident and our town with liability, but we also don't, and this is where I get, where during the workshop, Newport has a great application set forth. It's very in detail, covers everything. We had input from all our department heads. They agreed. I mean, there's certain aspects that I would, and I think we talked about it, they cover fireworks, but in our ordinance, we already addressed that we can't have fireworks. So if we, if this council feels deemed to have the application set up to cover all that, you know, remove something like that, but also, I think, when we address the fairs, festivals, I don't think the town should be in the wedding business. We shouldn't be competing with our venues and getting into, like Councilwoman Perella said, about having five events at parks that our families enjoy. So my concerns are, you know, should there be a limit? That comes before this council. I do know that it is our responsibility to address that when it comes, so if there was a docket where we had five events that came before us, do we make the decision then to limit it, but are we being discriminating towards other, you know, events that are asking for the same option? So between the number that we want and to strike, and just make sure that we keep in the perimeters of fairs, festivals, or public social, you know, church events, and stay out of the scope of, like you said, in circuses or, I mean, that's where children are, so we don't want to go down that road. So that's why I think it's good to talk about it, because in Newport, they actually have it in that application process, circus, festivals, they do weddings. Here in the town of Bristol, like we always say, it's up to this council to see the best interest of what fits our community. The reason why I asked Lou about the C1A is, I did not see the two refinements that the trust recommended to be added to the two clauses, and I was just curious if my colleagues did want to add that.
We absolutely do. I absolutely.
Of Section 1881, "For, the applicant must provide a diagram of the area to be used, and the location of the service and storage of the alcoholic beverages and being consumed." So not only storage, but being consumed, the trust had recommended that. And also, they recommended the cost of the detail be added to that clause, also, when it says, "The police detail what number of police officers as specified by the police department." So I was just wondering if my colleagues saw that that was appropriate to add that.
But can you go back again about the police detail? What should be added to number five?
Number of police officers as specified by the police department, and the applicant be responsible for the cost of the detail.
Oh, okay, okay.
So before we consider that amendment, I'd also like this council to consider as part of the motion, that we review this policy in November, because this is an updated policy, and it would seem to make sense that we can take a look at it in November, see how the year went, see if there's anything that we want to change. We didn't, well, we spent a lot of time on this, and I think it's a great change, but there may be more improvements or adjustments needed. So I would ask that we review this again in November. Is there anything else we would like to change? And I'm going to ask Vice Chair to change his motion, if he's okay with that. Beautiful. Okay.
I amend my motion to review this policy in November, and to also add Councilman Stewart's suggestions from the trust, which was, had talk about alcohol storage and where it needed to be consumed, and I believe the number of police officers. Did I forget anything else?
And the cost.
And the cost.
And I think, lastly, the application, will it be revised by the clerk? Any improvements by this council? I don't know. Or if it could just be discussed at another time?
Yeah, I would suggest, the application is administrative, okay? I would suggest that you don't make it part of the ordinance, because you should, that should be a fluid document. It should be able to change as it's needed. So the council can certainly approve one, but we don't usually specify, you know, exactly how that works.
I think also, you know, I think I asked a question at the workshop, that, you know, how much of that was similar to what Walter already had on his request? And I probably would, I think you said Newport had some things you didn't have, and vice versa, then perhaps you could just take the best of, but I think it should just be left with the department. I agree.
Oh, I agree. I just want to put it out there that if there are revisements that is needed, that we just address that. I'm not saying that we have to address it tonight. I was just saying, I think we should be cognizant of, if, I think you agreed during the workshop, that Newport did have some stipulations that it covers in more broad depth, yeah.
Is there anything else?
Well, I just like to say, I think the ordinance is written is a result of quite a lot of thought, and I think the small improvements lately made were good. I'm comfortable with it as is for six months. I think Tim's idea that we review- it as is for six months. I think Tim's idea that we review it in November makes good sense.
Perfect. Okay. Is there anything else?
Six months, it's November.
So the motion was, obviously, we talked about the changes, and then we'll review this again in November. So we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is ordinance 2016-6. This would be amendment to the town code to increase the number of Class BV limited licenses from five to six. This is the second reading for adoption.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve by increasing the number of Class BV limited licenses from five to six.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Item D1.
Don't we want to go back now to?
That's Item D1.
Oh, it is D1. Sorry. You have it twice, like you normally do.
I do, yeah. Okay, now, this is the request of Ben Luke for Bristol Buffet LLC, doing business as Bristol Buffet, 180 Mount Hope Avenue. Request council consideration for a Class BV limited intoxicating beverage license, as previously discussed in the advertised public hearing. You have the recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, and chief of police, all to approve.
I would move that we grant the license to Bristol Buffet. We've had extensive discussion at about three or four other meetings on this application, and I think this is a fair resolution at this point.
Could you just add, in accordance with all statutes and ordinances?
In accordance with all statutes and ordinances of the Town of Bristol and the State of Rhode Island.
I'll second for discussion.
Go ahead.
I know Mr. Luke's back there. So this BV limited license, and I'm going to look to my solicitor, giving to Mr. Luke, would be to Bristol Buffet, and I just have one question to Mr. Luke. So currently now, Mr. Luke, you own the building, and that is your business, Bristol Buffet, that occupies that building on Mount Hope Avenue?
Correct.
So this license will be going to that business, Michael?
Yeah, the business is the license.
And the owner owns the building and the business?
Well, I don't know if that's correct. Many times, the, many times, property is owned by a separate entity than the business, so maybe the attorney.
There is two businesses, right. There is a business that owned the property, and there is a business that owned the Bristol Buffet by itself.
The license goes with the business.
Correct.
But the building is separate?
Correct.
But you own both of them?
But I own both, correct.
Okay.
He's the principal. You're the principal for both.
For both companies, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, would you remind me, what do we typically do for review time on a new license?
It's been as short as three months, as long as six months, with the understanding that this license would have to go through its renewal process at the end of the year. So.
Which is November.
Well, yeah, we usually do vote on it in the beginning of November.
So six months would probably be perfect.
That would be a normal review.
Yeah.
So Mary, are you comfortable with adding that to the, that there's a review?
Yeah, plus it's.
It would be happening anyway.
It's going to happen by a matter of course.
Right, right.
Is there any other discussion?
And as I will quote the chief, if there's any other problems, he will come to us, correct?
He's not shy?
Have I been paying attention, chief?
I'm going to add my own two cents, which was that I've been in opposition of this because of the chief's concerns, and now that you, we've changed this, this council has considered a BV license, and you no longer have objection to it because of your department, I don't have an objection to it. Please.
Peter Patraka for the applicant. Can I just put on the record, just so if there is an objector that may come out, that my client has 31 years in the business, owns two restaurants, is clearly qualified to hold a BV and/or a B license on his own, he's had no trouble, and again, he's been in business in a neighboring town in here for 31 years. And I appreciate what you're doing, but there could be an objector that may come in and try to stop the license. That's the only reason I'm making that statement.
The public hearing's already concluded, so there were no objections.
The public hearing's concluded on the license before he even testified?
Well, we had it first thing.
It was first thing on the agenda.
Yeah.
He called it three times.
I thought that was for the.
No, this is just the granting of the license?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there any other discussion?
Just that I appreciate your patience, and we're glad to have you here in Bristol.
Yeah.
And I thank the town for the opportunity.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So your client does have a license now, so it's done.
You're all set. You're welcome.
Good luck, Mr. Luke.
Object away, right? So, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. The next item is the request of Ethan Tucker. On behalf of the Mint Gallery 433 Hope Street, request council consideration for a holiday sales license. You have a recommendation from the town administrator and fire chief to approve, and also late item recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police also to approve.
Make a motion to grant the holiday sales license to be approved upon all the recommendations of all the town departments, police, and all Rhode Island ordinances, state statutes in town.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And we welcome Mr. Tucker to the vacant spot on Hope Street. So it's good to see storefronts being occupied.
Item D3, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, you have the petition of Courtney Poisot, doing business as Common Pub and Grill, 421 Wood Street. Request council consideration for one day, excuse me, Sunday, dancing and entertainment licenses for each Sunday through June 5, 2016. You have recommendations from the town administrator and fire chief to approve, and also late item recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police also to approve.
What are the hours of operation of this?
This would be.
9:00 PM to 12:30, which I had a question on. Is that chief on that?
12:30 on a Sunday evening?
Yes, that's the time they've requested.
Okay.
Yeah. Isn't that a little late on a Sunday evening, with neighbors working last day?
I can't tell you that we've had any complaints recently there. So like anything else, I think we're willing to try it. If there's a problem, I can assure you that we're going to address it quick and swift that night, and it'll be returned back to you with information and action act on it.
Well, that's what I was thinking, that we ought to have it understood, that we could pull the rug off under this if we get a bad report. Would this passage allow us to do that, Mr.?
You always, sorry, you always have the discretion to revoke a license. A license is something that you grant, subject to your terms and conditions, so yes. You'd have to have a hearing. You'd have to let the applicant know ahead of time and call them in, but yes, you would be able to revoke.
Well, I think that's important in this case.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day Sunday dance and entertainment license for May 8, May 15, May 22, May 29, and June 5, from 9:00 PM to 12:30, with the understanding that we will be, you know, keeping a vigil and eye on it. And again, this is with all the recommendations from the town administrator and fire chief to approve.
I'll second for discussion.
Go ahead.
See, I think my colleagues' concerns are, as of late, we, like a lot of our topics lately, we've been going on meeting after meeting of our concerns. I think the sensitivity is, you have multiple dates here, which we thank you for specifying, each Sunday. That's what we asked. There's other establishments, though, that I think came before as for entertainment on a Sunday, but it was like only one day for a special fundraiser or a special event. So I think the concern is, we're going now on Sundays with a late time on multiple dates, not just for a special fundraiser or special consideration. But I do agree with the solicitor and my colleagues. You have establishment that's doing very well, and we want you to do well. Just our concern is, we worry about the neighbors. It is a Sunday, and this council does understand the needs of businesses, and that's why we entertain and give the opportunity to businesses. And if something should happen, I don't think any business owner should blame this council, because we afford the opportunity. The police department and administration offers the opportunity. So I'll be in support also.
But is there a reason it can't end at like 11:30 or 12?
Please, and if you could state your name.
Courtney Poisot?
Thank you.
421 Wood Street?
Welcome.
So the whole reason why I had it starting a little bit later that way is I'm trying to cater to my industry people, where on a Sunday night, we have a lot of waitresses, bus kids, bartenders, that all come from downtown, that they frequent my establishment. I adore them. They are the best clientele that I could ever ask for. A lot of them don't get out of work until 9, 10, 11 o'clock at night. We are also going to be doing a 15% off discount for industry people. You bring in your paycheck stub, your tip certification card, you'll get 15% off your food bill, your all-around bill. That's who we were trying to go with. I can absolutely, if you would rather have us kind of cut it off at 12 or 12:15, I would be totally not obliged to that at all.
How loud would karaoke shouldn't be?
It shouldn't be loud at all.
Well, it can't be loud. I mean, with respect to you, and I think that's where you're hearing concerns with us, is that.
Yep, absolutely, and I'm.
And the chief, his recommendation is to approve this because, and I think he just said it, was, there's no issues with you. So, you know, we tend to lean and be lenient for people who are good neighbors, if you will.
No, absolutely, and I wouldn't want to upset any of my surrounding neighbors. I get along with everybody that lives in proximity to the pub.
But you have people upstairs, right?
I am one of them. So.
But you'll be at work, though, so.
I want to see that complaint, chief, if that comes out.
But even besides that, I mean, we are, we always keep our doors closed, just because that's one of the things that even to try to get the air, I put an additional AC in, just because we can't really leave the doors open. We can't really leave the windows open, because I totally agree that that is what puts the noise out there. Even when we're not trying to be loud, it's still loud. So I try to take all those avenues to fix that and make sure that we don't have any complaints. If by chance we do have somebody that comes and complains, I put a stop to it immediately, whether it's telling the band to quiet down, whether to put the speakers down. I have no problem doing that. But besides that, that was the only reason time-wise that we had it ending at 12:30.
I'm comfortable with the 12:30. Chief of Police said we'll give it a try, see how it goes, take it by case by case, and then I'm sure we'll go from there.
Any other discussion?
She's not very far, so we'll knock on the door if she's not on the property, tell her to take a walk downstairs with us.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that's great what you're doing, too, about the industry night. That's a nice concept.
Really is nice.
And I do take notice of what you have been doing on that Wood Street corridor with your business, and we always say that we have to revitalize that corridor, and we thank you for it.
Good point.
Thank you very much.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Could I just make one other comment to Courtney?
Certainly.
I think we all appreciate, too, the work that you've done with the Haz and with other groups out there, so, and thank you very much for that.
Awesome. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is Item D4. This is the petition of St. Elizabeth's Church Holy Ghost, excuse me, Holy Trinity Committee, request for one-day dancing and entertainment licenses from May 20, 21, and 22, 2016. You have recommendation of the town administrator and fire chief to approve, and a late item recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police to approve with certain conditions.
I mean, I move we approve with all of the, make sure everybody's in compliance with the ordinances of the town, particularly the noise ordinance at that particular day, those particular days. I thought we already did this. I know I had these two dates at my house at one point.
No.
Huh?
The Holy Ghost and Holy Trinity. The Holy Ghost?
Yeah, man, it was another.
No, I thought we had both, because I kept the two things, so I know what dates they were. But it doesn't matter.
It's very possible we may have, because with the election, things got a little, you know, this is one of those Band-Aid, I mean, excuse me.
Just double check.
Belt and suspenders.
Belt and suspenders, yes, exactly.
Because I was like, okay, here's the two days. No, so, all right.
Does this mean we have to do the Holy Ghost twice, too?
No. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is from Jacqueline Vaughn, doing business as Mama's Real Lemonade, 15 Bar and Place, request council consideration for a hawkers and peddlers license. I believe it's to remain stationary. The recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police is to deny.
Well, I respect that advice, because in general, I think we want to promote business when we're in town places, and I've always felt that, except on holidays like 4th July, that the peddlers are really just a competition for the businesses that we traditionally, for good reason, want to support. So I am in agreement to deny this.
Well, I think we've denied other people the same request many times, so I don't think we have a choice, but I would, you know, let the applicant know that they're, you know, like, what the July committee sometimes will have, they have provisions where you can, you know, buy a spot, so to speak, at the concert series and things like that, that they can take advantage of if they wanted to do that.
So is there a motion?
Motion to deny.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to deny, and I think it's, just for clarity one more time, is that it's not just because of the request, it's the request to be in a static location specifically.
Not only that, there are zoning issues with this.
Right.
There are definitely zoning. I mean, hawkers and peddlers, these licenses that come to you are for public places, public spaces, not for private spaces, because when you go on private space, then that becomes a zoning issue.
Thank you for that clarity. So we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the sidewalk use license renewals for 2016-17. You have recommendation provided by the town administrator, director of public works, to approve with certain conditions. You also have recommendation provided by the town administrator and chief of police to also to approve with certain conditions. And there is a report that did come in today from the code compliance coordinator that essentially suggests that these be approved, because there have been no significant changes from the previous, previously approved license applications. He does point out that two on the list, Floral Symphony, previously located at 267 Thame Street, has been relocated, so it would be no longer necessary to consider that one, and also that another place, Xanabelle, at 573 Hope Street, we are informed is moving. So he suggests eliminating those two from the list.
Well, if they move, they don't take this permission with them, do they?
No.
No.
No, it's very specific to the location.
So with that.
I don't have any.
Are they moving out of?
No.
Go ahead.
So with that, as specified, as our co-compliance officer, his key word is unchanged. So when we look at the submissions of the diagrams, I just want to be clear to all our businesses that they stay in that same form with no additions, and that our co-compliance will be taking a look. I just have a concern about that. So if everything is status quo from the previous year, I move that we approve the 2017 sidewalk use licenses for the businesses as specified, and as the clerk said, Floral Symphony and Xanabelle will have to, if they feel a need be to come for outdoor sidewalk use with their new location, will have to come on a separate application.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Item F1. This is the petition of Nicholas Cromwell of 649 Hope Street, request council consideration to allow nonprofit moorings to be charged the resident fee. You have recommendation provided by the town administrator and harbor master to deny.
Welcome.
Well, I'd like to first of all say that I think when something like this comes up, it's important that all those who are affected are properly notified. But I think I should recuse myself because of my involvement with the Harris-Suffolk Marine Museum.
Is that the same last name?
Which would be affected by this.
Same last name, right?
And a few others.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. Nick Cromwell from 649 Hope Street. I'm the volunteer board chair for East Bay Sailing Foundation, and East Bay Sailing Foundation provides sailing classes for adults and children. Foundation provides sailing classes for adults and children. We operate out of Bristol Yacht Club. We have a symbiotic relationship with Bristol Yacht Club, but we are two separate organizations. The classes are open to the public, anyone from any part of the local area. We do get people from as far away as California who are visiting for the summer that have taken classes. So, that's kind of cool. We do touch a lot of people. A lot of kids come to our classes. For the past, I think the organization's been around for about 30 years. I haven't been here that long. My wife talks about growing up, learning how to sail there, but I grew up down in Louisiana, learned how to sail down there. And the support for community sailing programs has grown in the country, and it's something I think is important for us to get people out on the water, to enjoy Bristol Harbor, to learn how to get out, both in a powerboat and in a sailboat. In addition to that, the organization, as I said, has been around for about 30 years. Prior administrations in the Harbor Master's office have given the nonprofits resident status and made the determination based on what they understood the rules to be. And so, up to this year, we received resident bills, and we've been paying resident bills. This winter, a rather large and hefty bill came and landed on our doorstep, and that was quite a shock to us. No notification was given. I've had numerous conversations with the Harbor Master about this, going back further than this winter. And so, to see his denial is surprising, because we talked, I thought we had an agreement that this was a good thing and that we wanted to promote it. We are talking specifically about moorings used for the support of the missions of the nonprofits, and specifically 501(c)(3) nonprofits, with an education mission to teach sailing. East Bay Sailing Foundation falls into that category. Harrisoff Marine Museum also has a sailing school. Both organizations have additional moorings, and those are charged the commercial rate, because those get turned around and are rented, used for those sorts of things. These are the ones that the small teaching boats go on, and so we'd be open to any questions that you have. And I can certainly talk about the value of sailing and getting out on the water and teaching kids how to sail to the community, if you'd like. But I'm pretty sure you guys know that.
How many moorings do you have?
So, we have 15 that fall into this category, and then Harrisoff has eight.
So, my question, when I read through this, I wasn't aware of the number, but it really doesn't matter in that regard, because you're paying, you were paying $1,500 basically last year, isn't it right? Is, it seemed to be like, I don't want to say technicality, but you're either this group or you're that group. And I was curious as to why we don't just create a group for this nonprofit, like category for this nonprofit, and come up with what that rate should be. I mean, if it's going to be limited to 501(c)(3) educational setting with the mission of teaching sailing, I don't know how many people are going to come and do that, and you could maybe set a limit as to how many each group could have at that rate. You could then determine whether it's the $100 rate, or $125, or some number between the commercial and the residential. I mean, is there a reason not to create that category?
That's totally up to you guys. I'm just enforcing what was in the regulations that already exist. You know, we don't have a nonprofit rate. I'm in support of one, but, you know, we realize as we just, the fees this year, and we went through everybody's moorings to make sure they were getting charged the correct way, the right amount of fee, and the whole nine yards, we noticed all of these. So, that's why there was the change this year.
And I'm not suggesting a nonprofit rate, because there's other groups that could then. So, I would be specifically the sailing school rate.
I agree, ma'am. And if I may, for the Harbor, I mean, to his point, I mean, this is a pretty big change, and it's been this way for 30 years. So, the former Harbor Master interpreted the rules, and we've had, I've been to a Harbor Commission meeting, discussed it with the Harbor Commission. They've sent a letter to the Harbor Master, and I believe one to the Town Council, although I'm not 100% on that, and basically endorsing that nonprofits should be, treated's the wrong word, they should be assessed fees at the residential rate. And to me, I think in the code, it would be as simple as in the definitions it says residential.
Right.
Just adding a statement that says, and I wrote something down here, so allow me to read it, "Moorings that are used to support the mission of 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations shall be considered residential for the purpose of assessing fees." And that, I mean, that would be a very simple way to go to the history of what we've done for close to 30 years and codify it to make the Harbor Master be able to enforce it the way that he sees, if he's amenable to that, that might be a recommendation that I could make.
Well, that's the other way to do it. You're just not, to change the definition or to set up a category, either way. But I would definitely put sailing school and not just nonprofit in there.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Nick, I had...
Sorry, Mary.
I would just want to ask, Mike, do you have a preference if we were to go that route?
I think if you wanted to go that route, I totally agree. The easiest and best way to do it is just change the definition of residential.
Nick, I just had a question. So, the bill went up roughly $2,400, if I'm doing my math correctly, or the difference between what you were paying and what it went up to?
So, it's a little, it's a little bit, the math is a little fuzzy, fuzzy math, right? But the residential fee was changed up as well, and we would still pay the increased residential fee, obviously. That, I think that's a good thing. But the commercial rate went up as well. So, last year, we paid $1,300, and this year, it was over $5,000, what was billed. It should have been $1,700. So, that's the increase. The $400 is the increase on to $9, I think it's to $90 for residential.
And what sort of hardship would this cause, this nonprofit, and what would that cost to sailing, and what would, how much would you have to push to each sailor to cover the commercial costs? I'm just trying to find...
Absolutely. I think we would have to raise our fees significantly, and it would directly pass to the customer, which is, would be unfortunate. In order to stay competitive with other camps in the area, to get kids to come, we can't be charging, we're pretty high on the list. But we do have, you know, high-level instructors and, you know, boats to maintain and those things. Fortunately, we have a very good relationship with the yacht club, who we're able to operate out of, and I know the museum has the same thing. We also have a very strong fundraising. So, to give up specific numbers, difficult, but, you know, it's probably $50 to $100 in addition to what we have to do.
How much more?
Probably $50 to $100, maybe even more, for each student to take a two-week session when it's already $500. You know, going up that much would be bad. And I would argue that that's going to drive away our customers, and then it's going to make it even worse. And we're going to, and we've had some really good growth in the past couple of years. The program's done pretty well, and my predecessors did some great work. So, the program's healthy, but I think this would be pretty devastating for us, and we have to take some...
Nick, how many students go through on a yearly basis?
Oh, man. I think we're around 300, and then probably, that's probably, that's kids, and then adults. I think we're in the, you know, 50 to 60 range, or let's call it 40 to 60 range, for the number of adults that come through. I can get, like, real specific numbers. I just don't have them off the top of my head.
I don't really think you're a commercial. I don't think you should be on the commercial side of it. I think that we need to just keep it, like with the definition change or create a category. I think that it's a good opportunity for people to learn to sail, and I definitely, you know, whatever we do needs to be specific to a sailing school so that nonprofits don't take advantage of that in other ways. But I definitely don't think you're a commercial entity.
So, I would, the only thing I think consideration to take with regard to sailing schools, there's things like Sea Scouts and other organizations that are out there that have leadership, and there's some veterans opportunities for sport that are out there. I don't think that it would be a great idea to only do, sort of make it real specific on community sailing programs. I mean, maybe nonprofit 501(c)(3)'s that need access to the water or something, or have an educational purpose. I just, you might leave it a little bit broader.
Maybe education purpose, yeah.
Maybe education purpose is appropriate, ma'am?
Yeah.
Yep. But that would, and I, again, if you want to be more specific, I just bring up that there are others. I don't want the council or the group to think that I'm coming here advocating just for East Bay Sailing Foundation, because I do have a Harrisoff person here, and I do believe that the larger community of community sailing programs, we as a town should support. If somebody else came and said, hey, we want to do this here, I think it'd be great. I think we need more of that. We can only do so much, and there's lots of kids out there that should be given the opportunity to get out on the water more.
You have to wait to make sure. You would have to go in line for a mooring if there wasn't one available.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yeah. The process that exists is all there and would have to be followed. Yes, ma'am.
That was my question. We took some time, and we had some workshops on the new rate structure. And I'm just wondering why this topic didn't come up, because one question we always ask is, is it comparable to other communities? Are we the only community that would be specifying this in our code for the rate structures of resident to commercial? Are there other communities that have these sailing schools in other towns? Those are the questions I would ask. I certainly understand where you're coming from. It's just, right now, it's just, I heard, you know, testimony of interpretation agreements. The only interpretation agreement I know is our code and our ordinance and to this council, and that's what pretty much dictates to our Harbor Master and to our administration. But with that said, do you know of any other communities?
You know, when we dug through all the communities, I didn't see any that were specific to a nonprofit group or a reduced fee for any different sailing, but we didn't. It's not what we were looking for. You know, we were looking for rates and whatnot. But I, thinking about it, I don't remember any. You know, so it's something we'd have to go back, dig through, and sure, but...
I can certainly help with that as well. I have a lot of connections with the community sailing programs in New England, and could help and ask pretty easily and get that information for you if that was of interest. One of the things, sir, I'd like to bring up with respect to the revision of the fees and the workshop you were discussing, this didn't come up, I think, and you're correct on that, but it's my understanding from the Harbor Commission that the increase in fee of, that I stated earlier, of about $4,000 for us and a couple of thousand for Harrisoff, was not included in that increase total end number. So, this is sort of a, it wasn't anticipated, it wasn't under, you know, it wasn't going to happen. This has just sort of happened now to us, and I guess we're, you know, trying to get it resolved.
It wasn't factored into the new revenue.
That's my understanding, ma'am, yes.
Well, that's good to know.
Well, Nick, I understand where you're coming from, and I also understand where the Harbor Master is coming from in the town, because one hand washes each other, I hear, in this factor. I mean, we want to help improve the waterfront, so that extra money and also to maintain those services. But at the same time, I understand what you're trying to do. So, for me to make a good decision here, I asked my colleagues if they would consider a continuance to the 25th of the meeting, so we can get the numbers, because I'd like to understand what the number breakdown is, what it would be. And I just would like to have some more factual data to take a look at. But I don't know what my colleagues consider.
Second, I'm over. So, there's a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Sure.
I'm actually going to add, my two cents is, I'm actually, this is not commentary on the sailing schools, because I think you do a wonderful job. Absolutely no negatives whatsoever. All the feedback that I hear is just extremely positive. But as Councilman Stewart has already mentioned, we spend a lot of time on these rates, and I get a little hesitant to adjust these, because I feel like we have X amount of people who use our waterfront. I think it's wonderful, but I don't want to put the burden onto the people who don't use the waterfront. And by changing these rates, we do that. If I use your numbers, and I know they were ballparked, so I won't hold you to them, but you said it went up about $1,700 would have been the new residential rate, and it's about $5,000 for the new rate, and you said about 350 students go through. My quick math is about $10 more per student. So, it didn't seem to be hurtful on that part of it, and it would, I guess for myself, I would prefer to stay where we are. And again, it's not commentary on the quality of the school, or the students, or the teachers, or anything else. It's just, we just spent a lot of time on that, and we spent a lot of time on a shortfall of $2.8 million, and every dollar for me counts, and I'm sure it does, excuse me, for my colleagues, too.
So, if I may, sir...
Certainly.
Mr. Swinney, if you would be, provide me with some of your questions, I'd be happy to get specific answers for you. And then, I would just also say that I have a budget as well, and we approved our budget before this was dropped in our laps. So, while I understand that, it's equally unfortunate that we are carrying this burden now because of, and we're not, I'm not asking for a change. This has been happening for 30 years. So, I'm just asking for it to be codified, because the Harbor Master interpreted it differently than his predecessor. So, I would argue that it's not a change that I'm requesting other than to say that we needed to write it down, and it wasn't written down by our predecessors, and it probably should have been.
I think one of the things is to be clear about the, you know, if it was factored into whatever the new revenue projections were, if it wasn't, because if you're, if what you're saying is correct, which I assume that it is, is that the Harbor Commission has always believed in what you're, you know, your position. And so, if they were going through and looking at the projections, you know, with the Harbor Master, then they probably didn't factor that in. And if they didn't factor it in, then there's no real loss of what the town is expecting to have. So, I think that, and that also goes to my point, like Nathan's question, goes a little bit to my point of, if you set up like a separate category, then it doesn't have to be the $100 rate. Maybe it could be 125 or 150, because right now, you were hit with, like, 150%, right?
Yes.
I mean, increase, because you were hit with $150 per mooring on that. That's a substantial increase over, like, over in one year for anybody to take and not being prepared to do that. And so, I do think it's important to be clear as to, you know, the Harbor Commission's position, you know, and what they have factored in. So, I don't know if, you know, the next meeting, somebody can talk about that as well.
So, we have a motion and a second to continue it. We've, I know the clerk is excellent at keeping notes on this. So, we'll certainly, through the clerk, we'll reach out to you and go through what questions we'd like answered, if you would, if you're amenable to that, certainly, at the next meeting, which is the 25th. Mr. Clerk, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second to continue this to the 25th. Is there any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, you have additional petition from Jacqueline Vaughn, asking council consideration to change the current practice to allow the selling of beverages from a stationary location.
Was this to just go back to the other one?
Well, this was to, basically to change the policy.
Oh, I see.
So, like, in other words, a new license category she's asking for.
There's a motion to deny.
This is essentially what Dell's does at Betty's.
Right.
I'm basically here for Jacqueline couldn't make it.
No problem. Could you state your name for the record?
My name is Todd Tien.
You can pull that down. There you go.
Todd Tien.
Welcome, Todd.
I live on 31 Burnside Street.
Good evening, Todd. Welcome.
Thank you. I guess, I don't know if you're familiar at all with our products. Basically, we're a small startup company out of Hope and Main Street in Warren. We're both residents of Bristol here. We started up this program, or this business. Now, we're currently selling out of the Mount Hope Farmers Market, and a lot of people really like our products, and they have mentioned to us that they would like us to see us in other places throughout, and that if they, for example, if they can't make the Farmers Market, that's a whole week for them. So, basically, we were looking for an opportunity to get the product into the community. We are in the process right now of trying to broaden out, and we are working with the Health Department, and trying to get our certification... Health Department and trying to get our certification to like bottle things and put them on a shelf. We don't have that at this point. We're just looking for the opportunity to try to maybe reach out to the community a little bit more, provide our product more.
Wouldn't it be easier for you... So I wasn't aware of the person's name, but I've seen you all the time at the Hope and Main events, right? So this is all the different, the ginger juice?
Yeah, we make a ginger mint. We make a...
So wouldn't it be easier for you all to co-locate with another vendor? Like, for example, somebody that already has like a storefront that already has refrigeration and already has all that stuff taken care of, to be able to, you know, maybe link up with a coffee shop and sell these products?
Yes, we are looking into that. At this point, we don't have the wholesale license to go through all that. We have license to like sell it at the Farmers Market. Somebody has mentioned that a store, one of the stores mentioned that, you know, if it comes down to it, they might consider letting us be in front of their store because it's on... I guess it's... I'm a little confused about the... If landlords still on the landlord's property versus the town property?
Todd, if I may, the solicitor wanted to share something. Thank you.
So this is analogous to when the fireworks people came into town and they wanted to set up tents on parking lots or, basically on private property. So we don't allow that here. In fact, most places, towns don't allow that. And you were giving the advice in terms, Mary, of hooking up with a storefront. In other words, being inside of a building. That's what we required of the fireworks vendors and we would require the same thing. This is a zoning issue. Someone who owns a store and has a parking lot can't just allow another business to set up shop on their parking lot because it's not allowed. So you really need to go the route of finding a location or more than one location where you can be inside. And depending on what you're serving, you may need a vitualling license and sign off by the Health Department. Maybe you have that for your moving truck right now. I don't know. But the town of Bristol, and again, most towns, do not allow businesses to set up shop in a private parking lot. When I was talking about public versus private before, it's when a vendor wants to come in for some kind of celebration, whether it's the last night concert or... There are many celebrations in this town. And they want to set up their business on town property for that evening. That's the type of thing that is allowed, but to be there on a permanent basis, day after day, that is not allowed.
But could I just say one other quick thing? I don't see the... I know the issue for the winter because you only have the winter market and Hope and Main is only one day a month, but what about in the summer?
Hope and Main is one day a month.
Right. But I mean, in the summer, you're going to have, Hope and Main is going to be there every weekend. And then you have the farmers markets, you have multiple farmers markets available in the various towns. Wouldn't that like serve your purpose of having more outreach or being able for your customers to find you?
That is an opportunity. Jacqueline knows, has, I would say, if you have more questions such as this, I'm not the best to answer a lot of these questions.
So I can help if you wanted to move from place to place in the town, that the council would be able to grant, if it desired, a hawkers and peddlers license, which would allow you to move, you know, like an ice cream truck or a lemonade truck that moves around throughout the town, but they cannot do a stationary place on private property.
So let me stop it right here, Todd. And we have a new economic development person. He's sitting right over there. Her name is Jessica Flomar. So why don't we do this for you? She's here along with Diane, along with the clerk, along with the administrator, along with this council to help you. So why don't we do this? If you would, if you could reach out to Jessica, and I'm sure Jessica has a card on her that you can...
Okay.
And set up a meeting, sit down and talk with her, talk about what your ideas are and then she can tell you what would be necessary and what's possible and...
Okay.
What applications, if any, are necessary.
For me, I'm trying to get more information myself.
Sure. It is not... Sometimes it's a very easy process and sometimes it's not.
Right, okay.
But that's why we have people like Jessica here to help you.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just to let people know, we did bring some of our products with us.
I feel like it's a commercial. Go ahead. Go ahead. You've got 10 seconds. Go ahead, Todd.
People want to try it, we have cups and napkins back there and...
Oh, it's free? Wow, that's a great commercial.
It's great.
Lemonade.
Okay.
We'll definitely try it.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next item is item H3. This is, excuse me, F3. This comes from Cheryl Burns, the interim executive director of Art Night Bristol in Warren, request consideration for the use of the Maritime Center to hold the 50th anniversary season opening celebration event, which happens to be tomorrow. And you have the recommendation of the Town Minister and Harbor Master to approve. Just will note that one of the reasons why this is before your honorable body is that there's a request to serve alcoholic beverages, not to sell them, but rather to serve them.
I approve that we approve this request as a fitting early use of our new Maritime Center.
So we have a motion. Is there a second? Second? There's a motion and a second. Discussion?
I have discussion. Michael, so who is hosting this event tomorrow? Is it the town of Bristol or is it Art Night? I just need clarification on who's hosting this. But it's going to be in a public building, so obviously it would be a host liability insurance of our own.
That's right. You wouldn't need a Tewa policy.
Exactly.
Host liability because it's, the beverages are being given out for free.
Okay. So with that said, we know it's tomorrow. This has been talked about for a while, so as the clerk had stated, it is tomorrow and it's before us tonight. And I'm in support of Art Night. I go to Art Night. It's just, I just want to specify that we make it clear that serving the alcohol in this new building, I just want to make sure that...
We're covered.
We're covered.
I checked with the trust specifically.
All right. So then because it's not us and it's somebody else, they don't have to get approval of the departments of the police or any application process of any other entity that wants to occupy our building?
Well, you just adopted an ordinance this evening where there is a whole application process.
Exactly.
So you need to figure out how this fits into that.
Sell.
I'm sorry?
That's sell.
Oh, that's just a sell?
Yes, that's just a sell?
Just a sell.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion?
No, just excited we're opening. I'm just excited the Maritime Center is open and we're going to be celebrating the Arts Night tomorrow night, 50th anniversary. It's pretty exciting. No, sure.
Welcome.
Yes, and thank you for having us and this is absolutely wonderful and we want to facilitate anything moving going forward as far as the policy and procedure. And it just so happens that we're the first ones in there, so if there's anything else that we can do, please let us know. We're very agreeable to that.
Cheryl, I didn't mean to pick on you. It's just we go down this road time and time again that we're all on board. We all want success and it's just, I'm surprised that we're having it tonight and it has been talked about and why it wasn't on maybe the previous council or, you know, a little more vetting. And that's, I guess I was just vetting that.
And I do want to clarify, this policy will apply because it's not just sell, it's sell or consume.
Right. So we're covered.
So a clarity point on there. It's from the solicitor. This seems to be fine for everyone listening in, is that forward momentum, there's a correct application process to go through, so make sure that you do that. You didn't do anything wrong. Make sure that you do that so you understand what the requirements are and you can make sure you meet them far before your event actually happens. Again, no reflection on you. And this is really important. Art Night is going to be there tomorrow night. Where? At our new Harbor Center. Take a moment, not only to see the art that has been hanging on the walls, but the art that is the walls, and I don't know if the bathrooms are art, but go look at them anyway because they're beautiful.
Several million dollars.
Several, yes. It is beautiful. So please, take a moment, go down and support the art, support Art Night, support the walls as we work on them, if you would. So we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is item G1. You have Public Service Appointment Section for April, the playing board, two positions with both with terms to expire April 2019. You have the application of, applications of Armin Biladi and Michael Rossi both seeking reappointment.
Make a motion that we reappoint. Both applicants.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees with term to expire in April 2019. You have the application of Michael Lenarsik of 155 Ferry Road interested in reappointment.
Motion to reappoint Mr. Lenarsik. I always have trouble saying his name, to the Police Pension Fund.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to stop right there and I say this every single time, thank you to our boards, commissions, volunteers, whatever it is that it happened to do. We are so fortunate in Bristol to have the, as many people as we do involved, wanting to be involved on a Monday night meeting or a Tuesday night meeting when everybody else is home. So this council very much appreciates what you do. Definitely. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is item H2. This is from the treasurer regarding a report on the Maritime Center project. This is continued from your previous meeting.
Is this the tree warden? Tree warden.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that one completely. You have, you have item G2. This is from the administrator regarding the appointment of the tree warden.
Mr. Chairman, there's actually two adjustments. One is the amount that was presented to you actually has been reduced. There will be $40 for the first year until he approves, so it will be a provisionary period. So that will be changed to $40 also. In sharing this with the town administrator, I mean, town solicitor, he felt that I, we needed to make a few adjustments in that agreement, so I'll come back with the agreement to you. However, I would request that you make the appointment and I will come back with the final details of the terms of service.
So we've already made the appointment.
No, no, no. You held off because of this.
You didn't because there was... You are correct. Thank you for the clarity. You're absolutely right.
So Tony, would you mind if I do the motion of appointing the tree warden as past practice until further to our next meeting? The stipulations of the agreement will be applied then.
Terms of service.
You know what I'm saying?
Correct.
So it'll be just like if this didn't exist and we had a tree warden and everything was the same and then we could go forward from there once we agree upon and vote on the agreement.
The terms of service.
Yes.
Correct.
You want to take that as my motion or do you want me to specify it again?
Well, you can't incur cost then under those circumstances, so you couldn't have it work under that. I mean...
Well, because we don't know... And yes, we could not. We could not because we don't know what we're agreeing to yet.
So I was going to just suggest that you just continue, tie them at it to the 25th.
Okay. Yeah, that's why I was worried about separating them, you know? So...
Motion to continue to the 25th meeting. Second.
I just had one quick question and that is, I know this is hard to judge because you don't know, but you know, to exceed them out on here or not to exceed them out because it could go endlessly.
We need, we need to make adjustments to this. I'm seeing it for the first time also.
Okay.
May I? Please. Just on that point, you are very clear. The salary, since if you recall, there was no salary included on the town budget, however, this would be common from the tree account that we currently have, the tree preservation account. But you are very correct. I have to be very cautious because we have to split the money to make sure we still have enough funds to do the work and the rescribe it and we've used pretty much the $60,000. So out of that, now will be a salary and the tree removal and trimming.
Well, that's just what occurred to me because this, as written, looks pretty open-ended. You're going to need to control the number of hours in order not to have the total go up.
Very true. We have a limited amount to work with, the $60,000, so, and we have quite a bit of work to be done.
It'd be good if the document said that you're going to do that because what you don't want is somebody running off and working up a whole lot of hours and sending you a huge bill and demanding it.
What will happen is he'll be coming in on a weekly basis. We've already discussed some of the details. He'll be coming in presenting the invoice for his work.
So you guys are in control.
Yes, but I also have to sign off on the amount of work that gets done.
So Tony, the current process is that somebody calls you, they have a problem with the tree, then you will authorize the request and then the tree warden works off your approval request, correct?
So if I get a call for a tree, the request is passed on to the tree warden to go and visit and assess the tree. Then when he comes back with a recommendation, then I either agreed or disagreed with the recommendation. Well, basically, there's three levels. There is urgent, priority one and priority two. And that's very clear what stipulates that, if there is urgency to remove a tree and then we know what the cost will be. But also, we've figured out that the amount of time, in speaking with Mike King, he should be able to get two to three trees done per hour, so I can monitor the requests that need to be done.
But I think in addition to that, if we have a very good tree warden, we really want that person to occasionally just review the trees in the town. For instance, we've still got this existing problem with the sequoia trees on the Common. I would love to hear his advice about what we might do to save those because they're iconic trees of value to the town and its overall pride and I'd love to hear him say what he thinks we could do with them.
Pretty much the Winnebago Mount Carmel is dead. I don't think they're saving that one. I think that one needs to go.
That is actually one of the items because I know Councilman Perola had requested that previously and that is one of the notes that I have for him to do. But in addition to that...
Would you perhaps provide us some kind of answers to that?
Certainly. But in addition to that, he's going to be more involved also. He'll be involved with the tree preservation group as well, so it will not be just in isolation. So it goes along with that and his intent is also to take a look at the hall, you know, all the trees in town and for us to review that. But again, I have to budget.
So for clarity for the public, we had, Mike King is our tree, Mike and I think, warden.
Warden.
Thank you. Tree warden. And Mike was unable to continue because business was doing well and family got in the way of family life, let's put it that way. We have a new gentleman that's looking and this is a departure from our prior process, which is we're looking to reimburse small dollars for some of the time that is spent doing this. there's all this dialogue, the gentleman that actually applied for this position that we interviewed does this at another few communities and also with the state, so we're very fortunate to have Mike King, and now we're very fortunate to have Stephen with us, so we're potentially have Stephen with us. So we have a motion, a second, to continue to our next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, as I tried to do before, the Town Treasurer has a report on the Maritime Center project, H2.
Will you be at art night, Julie?
Um--
I'm putting you on the spot, Julie.
I'm sorry, my daughter has an honor society event that I have to attend--
Oh, congratulations.
Family comes first, Julie, no problem.
I'm going to do that, but, but we did have a meeting at the Maritime Center this evening, five o'clock, and it was with our CPC, and it was very exciting to see that center really shaping up, it looks beautiful inside, they're doing the final cleanup and finishing touches now, so what one item, though, on our agenda, we were hoping to have an update on, is that final cost of the exterior work, which we would like to do, but we don't know whether we have enough money in the budget to do, and we were told that we don't yet have that cost, so I'll ask that we just continue this to the next meeting, that should be the last one, so we also talked about tentative ribbon cutting and open house, and so we're looking at May 20th, we need to check with our grantor agencies, but that'd be a Friday, maybe a late afternoon, four o'clock event, something like that, so, very exciting.
It's very exciting.
Well, it is exciting, but I personally have the inclination to close this project off pretty soon, and it'd be wonderful to do every little chink here and there, but they offered to do a free job on that long element on the west side, which I think they should do, and fulfill the promise, and if we have to leave a little rest of the, filling of the chinks, I'd rather do that than run this way over budget.
No, and I, and I agree, I think the whole CPC shares that view, we're, right now we're looking at about--
Julie, CPC is, I know what it is--
Oh, yes, Capital Project Commission--
Thank you.
And some of our members are here tonight, so I'll give them a little shout-out.
Could you raise your hand if you're for CPC?
Wonderful job.
Thank you very much, thank you for what you do, yeah, we appreciate it.
Susan Rabidou, Don Heemond, and then Jim Dolins is not a CPC member, but he comes
to every meeting and he really shares the--
He's an honorary member of the CPC.
He's an honorary member, yes.
Good for you, Jim, good for you.
Oh, did I miss somebody?
Bill.
Oh, Bill, I got Bill, I sent him first, yes, Bill Gano.
And you and Diane, of course.
And Diane and myself, yes, so, but as I've said over and over when I've been giving these updates, I'm just really pleased with this committee, where they're doing a great job, really a pleasure to work with, really detail-oriented, professional, respectful, it's been just a pleasure, so I look forward to doing future projects, as we've talked about with them as well, and this one's not quite done yet, but just to speak quickly to your point, Halsey, right now, we're looking at about, we've got about eighty-five thousand dollars left in the project that would be potentially available for that structural piece, so, right now, while we can still leverage grant dollars, it would make sense to get that done, if we can get it done, but we are of the same mind, we don't want to just do a, a big cost overrun, we've talked about our budget, we've been really pleased with how much work we've been able to get done with this project, so we'll just update you at the next council meeting, and then we can all make a collective decision together at that time.
So I'll make that motion that we continue to May 25th, and again, thank the Capital Projects Committee members, and I believe Mr.--
Absolutely.
Gano.
So we have a motion, and please stay right there.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second, discussion, please.
Yeah, my name is Bill Gano, Lovin Smith Street in Bristol, I've been enjoying serving throughout this project on the Maritime Center, and as you know, we were able to use engineering services to look at the areas of the building that weren't affected necessarily by the Maritime Center design, and we were able to get some engineering services from Mr. Watney, who was able to prioritize and rank the other aspects of the building that are beyond the renovations that we undertook, there were a certain number of those things, that footings and the structure that were very much dependent upon correction in order to support the Maritime Center renovation, so that you couldn't have put the second floor and made the adjustments to the building without putting additional risk on the whole building itself, so we were very tight watching the budget, and as we're coming to a close, it's certainly at a point where the remaining budget, we want to solicit and kind of see that you're on board, potentially looking at what we can do with the remaining budget, not necessarily to increase it at all, to try to attack everything that's not inside the renovation zone, but we were able to characterize, get actual engineering costs, and determine a number of different solutions, so whatever the remaining budget is, we want to make sure that you're on board with trying to characterize the best we can do to kind of get the lifecycle costs and maintenance of the building as much addressed as we can, while we've got the structure and the people on site to do that, so it's, you know, if, if it's your desire to hold the budget and turn in a, you know, a low-budget project, or if it's to go forward and see the best we can do to keep this building sustained for the future, that's, I believe, our collective inclination to go that way, but we want to make sure we're, we're in favor and in the direction that you want us to go in, so.
So this council has said multiple times that we don't want to be penny wise and dollar foolish on this, and we don't want to make it almost all the way to a quality project, by the same token, we've also said many times that we have a budget that we need to stay with, and so if we're in and around that zone, I'm interested to hear what is put in front of us at the next meeting, I know for myself, I don't want to skip something that seems appropriate to do right now, as long as it isn't way over the top.
Pardon me?
Thank you.
Do you have a report that you could provide to us prior to the next meeting of like what the ideas are, what would be done? Julie, anybody?
It's, it's, the same report which I think we've seen in the past, and I can certainly get you another copy, so you can just refresh on, on that work that's, that's going to be--
Well, we're just talking about, like, yeah, the items that are--
Still a question?
New items, right.
I think that west wall, right, the west wall's still in question.
Yeah, it's the west wall, the one facing the harbor, that's kind of our, our last major or priority piece, undefined by--
You're talking about having figures prior--
So to Mary's point, maybe you could share well in advance of our next meeting, so we had some time to take, if you--
Hopefully I'll have--
As much advance notice as possible, how's that?
Absolutely.
And I will talk, I will speak for this council, to say to the CPC, thank you, again, that is a thankless work that we thank you for, so.
Mr. Gano's comment, though, and I'm very positive about this, but I remember many, it was, it's been years now, ever since Roger Williams got involved with the conceptual plan, and, and I know how this conversation will walter at one of these meetings, is as you alluded to of the construction, of the structural aspect of that building, and my concern from the beginning is, when you do that assessment, under to take any project of any old building or whatnot, you have to really be thorough, and when you said tonight, the footings and the underneath, that was my concern, because that's how you get into overruns, the walls, that was a little tricky one because of the age of stone, and then when you go in the middle of a stone wall and find that, you know, there is damage and you have to secure it for the future of the weather, that's why I just, time to time, when we take on these big projects and we hire these engineers to do conceptual studies, they have to be on target, so we don't find out later that we have these overruns and we have to address them, so.
So we have a motion and a second to continue, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you again.
Also continued from April 13th is the Clean Bristol topic, item H3.
Well, I know the DPW did a wonderful job during Earth Day, and yourself, Tony, so I know, I don't want to take anything away from Halsey, but no one was saying anything, so.
And many, and many others, and many other volunteers, that is very true, we did purchase the, the vac, it's been tried already, we actually had to try in a couple areas on Wood Street to test it out, it's working now beautifully, unfortunately, the Director, McBride, is not able to be here this evening, but relating to, he is working our schedule that there will be at least once in the downtown area on a weekly basis, you know, walking, you know, sweeping it through, but at this point, it seems like, also, we have the sweepers out, we've begun on the north side of, south side, I'm sorry, south side of town, Monkey Ranch and the area coming, going north, and will continue the, the schedule.
Well, I think that's great, and as far as the sweeping of the streets goes, are we doing much coordination with the police to get cars off the place, because if we have to run the sweeper around the cars, it's not near as good as straight along the gutter, how easy is it or how hard is it to coordinate the plan of sweeping with the police signage?
It's not very difficult, it's just making sure there's a 24 to 48-hour notice that gets out, you know, onto the streets, that gets posted, one, two, it's a matter of DPW then coordinate with the police department, which has been done in the past.
I applaud you for the new emphasis on using the sweeper, and I think that if we can coordinate the elimination of parked cars, that'll make the job even better, and I look forward to observing the sidewalk sweeper, I suppose a little bit of broom sweeping in front of that may be a good idea sometimes to get the edges.
Well, we're hoping that the, the merchants will be a little cooperative with us as well, you know, they, they sort of, they own the business, we will do our best to assist them in keeping them, but we request a five-minute, you know, on a daily basis, where the broom does wonders, and we hope that they step up and do that as well.
Well, you know, I, I think it's been observed elsewhere, and I'm so pleased to observe it also in Bristol, when an area is really clean, as some of them have been, you can walk along a few days later and there's not a bit of litter, I think people do respond to the fact that we have a clean street by feeling they don't want to be the first one to throw down the litter, so, the more we do, I think the more the, the citizens will do to help us.
Agreed, and, and I've seen some of the businesses out and about, some of them actually planting, doing some trimming, we, we will fill in some of the areas downtown with some mulch, because I know some of the areas get pretty swept up, and so they need some filler.
I'm afraid we removed, we removed some of that mulch with all the cigarette butts in it, so replacing it's a good idea.
Yeah, but we will be doing that soon, very soon.
Beautiful, thank you. Motion to receive and file?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, wait a minute.
Discussion.
Um, actually, no, you can come up, come on, I wouldn't do that to you.
Don Squires, nine Tobin Lane, this is a topic that's really got my attention, you know, this is like the seatbelt law, not wearing your seatbelt doesn't kill people, it's the people that are running lights, the people that are speeding, okay, when it comes to the trash, okay, people put their trash out on the curb, on top of snowbanks, unsecured, I mean, I, my trash is picked up today, and I was going down my street and there's papers from the recycling all over the place because there's not, it's not being secured, okay, another issue is that you have these landscapers, they don't have enough sense to cut the grass so it blows onto the, the grass, they blow it onto the street, and what are they doing, they're, they're blowing the, whatever's on the lawn into the next neighbor's lawn, into the curbing where it enters and plugs up the drains, okay, my, you know, if, if there is not a, an ordinance, there should be one about putting your trash out unsecured, okay, and then all these guys that are just blowing their trash all over the place in, in the grass clippings, so, you know, the, the streets are, and then another topic too, when I was in the Sur in Switzerland, the businesses were out there every night cleaning their sidewalks, okay, for the next day, and, and I know in front of my house is, certain part of it is, belongs to the town, well, I maintain that, I cut the grass, you know, I, I try to keep it nice, like a lot of people do, but if you go around the corner over here on State Street in the fall, all those people near the, the Mexican place, they rake their leaves into the gutter, what the hell, clean it up, put it in a bag, you know, get it picked up at the curb, so if there isn't an ordinance, I think you, you people should investigate it, and then we wouldn't have a discussion of our, you know, gutters being dirty and cigarette butts all over the place and stuff like that, so it's, it's more than just, you know, this department's not doing this and that and that, all that other stuff, I mean, you only could do so much with the manpower that you got.
Agreed, and I think that if we apply the good neighbor clause on this, is that if it's, you know what a good neighbor is, and you know what a bad neighbor is, but in regards to those, we'll look into that, because there are some ordinance that do speak to exactly what you're speaking.
I mean, in my neighborhood, Tuesday afternoon, my trash is picked up on Wednesday, Tuesday afternoon at noon time, the people are putting their trash out on the curb, you know, get your butt out in the morning and put your trash out Wednesday morning instead of the day before.
I enjoy your frank way of talking, I do, I'm not making fun either, I actually, I seriously enjoy it, so, thank you.
But there's something that should be looked into.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk? The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, you have here Susan Rabidou, the Engineering Project Manager of the Bristol County Water Authority, who would like to provide a brief presentation on the upcoming water main replacement project for Medicom Avenue.
Good evening, Pam. Good evening, Pam. I'm Pam Marshan, Executive Director for Bristol County Water, and I'll just introduce the project, and then Sue can give you the details, but I just wanted to say, it's really no coincidence that the DOT was in here earlier, speaking about their project on Medicom Avenue. We were actually working with the Veterans Home on their new facility, and trying to figure out how we can get them more pressure, they were having problems running into being able to supply enough water and enough pressure for the new design, so we helped them with the new design, tried to figure out every last pound per square inch we could get them, and then we heard that the DOT would be doing a project on Medicom, we have a long-term project to extend the high-pressure area in Bristol, it wasn't supposed to be started for a few years, but we said, wow, this will give us a great opportunity, we can jump in, replace the main from our tanks to Amawansket, would help the Veterans Home, plus it would give us our first project to get started on this expansion, and would save us money because we wouldn't have to do all the paving. We got it all started, started the design, spoke to the state, at first they were doing the project, then we found out, nope, they delayed the project, it wasn't going to be done for a few years, and they were going to make us permanent pave everything, and then we said, well, wait a minute, the gas company's coming in, they're doing work, we need to do work, the Veterans Home needs this to be done, so I'm mentioning this mainly because we did ask our state reps to help us with this, and they did come through, worked with the DOT to get this project back online, so that they will be doing their work next year, so all the utilities can get in this year, and we don't have to do the full paving and the full cost for the paving at all of these intersections, and it all will get done at one time. So meanwhile, Sue can give you the details of where we'll be working.
Yep, this is, this is the same map that was in your, was all in your package, that flyer, or something quite similar to that flyer, was mailed to all of the people in our high-service area, so basically, this is where we're putting in the new water main from Robinwood Drive, near Arnold Lumber, down to the police station at Bayview, so there are some sections between those intersections that the DOT, that we're going to have to do the required paving, but we will save some of the paving costs at those intersections. Our water main, oh, sorry, the water main is on the west side of the road--
Thank you.
So that, we are replacing the water line that is already there, from Anawansket down to the police station, we're replacing the main, that is why you'll see the bypass piping that's going out, started this week, so all of the people, all of that area will be served through temporary above-ground pipes during, while the work is being done, so these pipes are going to be laid all along Medicom, and there's one that's going to be going behind the Veterans Home that you won't see, the ones on Medicom, you know, will have to have ramps over them, sometimes they can dig down and, and put them lower, the, the Dambra Construction is our contractor, they've already been out talking to all the people on Medicom, they got special flyers, the people who will have the pipes going into their houses, so it's, we had a public information night, tonight, and for people to come in if they had some concerns, so far, everything seems to be going very well, the contractor's been very proactive getting out there with people, we have ad going in the newspaper this week, and we will continue throughout the project, the actual construction will start either May 16th or possibly the week after that, the contractor has 120 days to finish, which would be through the end of August, his schedule is that the water main work will take about eight to 10 weeks, so it should be done in July, they've also agreed--
Before the Fourth of July?
They've agreed to not work the week before Fourth of July.
All right.
No, now they've actually said they, they were, they're not going to work that whole week, but if, if any, they'll work until Tuesday, just so that the streets can get ready for the Fourth of July.
Great.
Obviously not on Fourth of July either.
Thank you.
Well, ready or not, the Fourth of July's coming, so.
Yeah, they won't be working on any holidays, just so you know that, that the above-ground pipes do get tested, and they will be safe, the water will be perfectly safe.
Will our residents be able to tell the difference when they turn the tap on? Obviously, when you first put them in, I'm sure there's a little dirty water--
The water might be warmer, because the, the pipes are above ground, so in the summer, sometimes they might notice that the water is warmer.
But besides that?
No.
Thank you.
And it's coming from our tanks and from our system, it's the same water that's going through those pipes, we do have one small piece of work in the Tupelo intersection, again, you remember the DOT said that was one of their intersections, we're going to do a small section of pipe across that intersection in preparation for expanding our high-service further, years down the road, you know, just thinking that we won't be able to cut into that road possibly.
For the north side of town?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we've been waiting for that for a while.
The, the orange section is getting, coming on to the high-pressure area with this project, and then the next, the next project, yes, definitely going to the north. The work is going to be done from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, they will have to maintain two-way traffic, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, they're going to be allowed to do alternating traffic, there will be a lot of traffic on Medicom Ave, we're going to be renting one of those LED signs, we worked, we met with the police department, and they asked us to look into this, so we're going to get to rent a sign that's going to go near Roger Williams, we'll, we'll work with the police department on where to put it, which will say, expect traffic delays, seek alternate routes.
Does it play movies while you're in traffic, is that what it goes?
If there were delays before, you're delaying three hours now.
No, the message board hopefully will be very clear to what, what's about to take place during that day.
We can work with them as to what--
So setting the expectation. So setting the expectation for a driver, they'll know that...
Absolutely.
Expect that you're going to sit for a bit.
Right.
Okay.
There... We do not anticipate working in the evening. The contractor has mentioned that there might be a couple of days' work that would be better to be done at night, if they have to go all the way across Mediacom Ave with a, you know, pipe to get to a side street. So that would be done on an as-needed basis, and we'd work with the police to arrange that. It would just be occasional working at... They would work 10 to 6 instead of, you know, during the day.
Would you notify the residents in that median area because of the lighting situation in these cases?
Normally, we don't. But if there's an issue, as you know, they reach right out to us. There's going to be mock police cars there, uniformed police officers, and if there's a need, we'll reach out to them.
This is not going to be fun, but there is nothing that is too good for our veterans. And by that, there's also, you know, the people of Bristol, including our veterans, will win from this. So we're going to have to go through some pain, but the ultimate end goal is safer, better water, pressure, that is. And then ultimately, with what's going on with DOT in a year from now, it's going to be a lot of traffic on Mediacom. But ultimately, there'll be less congestion, not more... Less cars, just less congestion. Yeah. We hope.
We commend your intuition and the coordination. That's the key. As we talked about in the beginning with the DOTs, it's very refreshing to see that all entities are working together where, like you said, your project isn't, you know, after, and then we're digging up roads. You hear that time and time again, you know, we have a brand-new road, they just dug it up again. So speaking to that, I have a gentleman back there. He might want to address, on your paving, when you do water projects here in the town, is there an assessment after of when things get settled, your contractor going back to fix those cuts?
Yeah, they're required to do temporary paving when they're doing the project, and we require at least 90 days before they come back with the permanent paving. We try to do over the winter to get the most settling that we can.
Yeah.
This project, probably the final paving's going to get done in the fall.
Okay. Is there anything else that you wanted to share with us?
I just want to mention that the expansion of the high-pressured area will continue, but it'll be over quite a few years. Our next step is actually to build a new pump station, because the existing one is fairly small just to serve the small, higher-pressure area that was in the outlined area on the map. But we're going to... Our next step will be build a larger pump station, then we'll take another extension up to probably about the Stop &amp; Shop area, which will cover through back roads quite a bit of the higher-elevation area. And then down the future, we'll take it further to the north as well. So just to let you know, it's coming, but it's going to be taking a while.
If residents have questions as this before and during, how do they... What's the best way for them to get their answers?
Actually, just give us a call, as for myself or Sue.
Okay. And then you can walk them through whatever questions they may have?
Sure.
Okay.
So you just made me nervous, Pam, because when you say the capital projects... Your capital project plan, because we're talking millions of dollars on your end, too. If we do this project and the state does their project, and at the end of, I believe, 2018 with the DOT project on Mediacom and the paving that's going to take place, are you suggesting that there might be another dig-up after 2018 to go to Stop &amp; Shop?
Not in the areas that are being worked on. Right now, they're just doing the intersections. In the future, there will be, and actually, the DOT is scheduled to do a full pavement on Mediacom, probably about five years down the road or so. They... Again, that's another one they're pretty iffy about as to when that's going to get done. Again, we would time it with them to try and get in just before they're going to pave.
Yeah, that's...
Well, that promise has been going on about 25 years.
So you have time, Pam, I guess is what Holly just said. Yeah.
Press them to really mean it this time.
The Veterans Home helped us quite a bit on this one.
Well, thank you both. Is there a motion to...
Receive and file?
I guess there is. Is there a second?
Second.
And Pete, you wanted to share something?
One quick question, the most important question. Has this work been planned and budgeted for, or will there be a rate increase to the users of the Bristol County Water?
No, this is planned... Sorry, this is planned, and in our budget, we postponed another project that had been scheduled for this year. So we postponed that one, are using those funds to do this project, as we felt this was more important to get done at this time.
Thank you. Is there a motion to receive and file? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, would be item I-2, the annual invitation from the Bristol Veterans Council to participate in the annual Memorial Day ceremonies and parade on May 30th.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
I'm just going to say for all of us, thank you. We enjoy this and we find it to be an honor every year. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
You have correspondents from Judy Squires of the Fourth of July Committee regarding the license plate campaign. I believe Ms. Squires is here.
I believe she hand-walked those correspondents. Welcome.
Thank you. Judy Squires, Nine Tobin Lane.
There's a large person behind you walking up.
Bristol Fourth of July Committee. Ah!
That's awesome.
This is actually a new member of the Fourth of July Committee, our...
He looks familiar.
He does. And we are actually going to be using him as part of our marketing campaign for our license plate, which actually is kicking off today. So this was perfect that we were able to speak here. And this is the license plate that we are at right now, 650. We need 900. We have set the timeframe to start today and end on July 4th. So we have started this promotional blitz with the help of committee members who are involved in marketing, and we're hitting all different areas of the town and the state, starting with the membership. We also sent out letters to past Ms. Forths, past Ms. Little Forths, past Chief Marshals. The Veterans Home is doing an email blitz for us. The churches will have the flyers in their bulletins, fire departments. The opening day of the Little League, we had people handing out the applications. Walter was great in sending out emails through his summer program emails, so he attached our information. We're hitting the Elks, the Knights of Columbus, Rotary, Constant Contact. You've probably gotten some things on your computer. There'll be an insert in the souvenir book. We have a promotional video that Mike did. The newspaper article was in the Phoenix last week. Flag Tag Days will be handing out applications. And we're going up to the Gatsby Days Arts and Crafts Fair and hitting the Soccer Games Memorial Day. So we've got a lot of things on our plates to get this out there so that people in this state can have a patriotic license plate. And I know all of the council members have bought them, thank you very much, as well as the town administrator, town clerk. I don't think our town solicitor has done that yet, but I have applications here.
That was a wonderful shaming there, Judy. Wonderful job.
I'm not sure. I might have to check my database. And so I do have applications here. And Mike Riley is here with me, who is our town crier, as you can see, and he's been helping us with the promotion. And so we're hoping to get our 900 by July 4th. And since we just started this promotion, I've been getting phone calls and emails, and the license plates are coming in daily. So we're going to do it. And what was the problem? We started this in 2011, and we got tons of them at first, and then it kind of died off. And we've been doing like sporadic informational things and sporadic marketing. The difference right now is this huge promotional blitz, and I think it's working so far, and we really haven't hit the tip of the iceberg yet. So if you haven't bought it and you're out there listening to this on the TV, and anyone in the audience, come see me for a license plate order form. Also, if it's okay with the town administrator, may we leave our friend here out by the applications for a few weeks? And then we're going to be taking him around to different activities, and he'll be around town with us. Is that possible?
For a small fee, not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Before you go, if you're interested, if I may, to get one of these license plates, what's the cost and how difficult is it to do it?
Thank you very much for saying that. We... The cost is $41.50 per plate. It's a one-time fee, no trip to the DMV. We do all the work. And $5 of the $41.50 goes to the Veterans Home. So you'll be helping not only the Fourth of July Committee, but the... Or the Fourth of July Celebration, but you'll also be helping the veterans. $15 goes to the Celebration, and then $21.50 is the DMV's cost for actually printing these license plates. Very easy. You fill out the back of this form, and we need a copy of your registration, we need the order form, and we need a check or your credit card number for $41.50.
Can they apply online?
They cannot apply online. The applications are online on our website. But they have to print it and then send it into our post office box, which is listed on the application.
Great.
Judy, would you do us a favor?
Yes.
And make it a point to come back and see us close to when the deadline is and maybe a last push?
Promote it again?
Yes, please.
Yes. I'm hoping by the end of... Maybe May, we'll have them all. But no, I will do that. That would be great.
That'd be great.
And any help from your end would be appreciated. But what better way to show your patriotism than to have this plate on your car? And we keep saying, once people see them on the cars, they're going to want them, they're going to love them. But the problem is getting to the 900 to get them on there. And then I was also hearing, well, I'm going to wait till you get closer to the 900 before I buy my license plate. But we can't get there if people don't buy them. So that's been an issue. But I think people are realizing now that they have to get these in and we'll be good to go. Another thing I'd like to mention, too, if people bought license plates a number of years ago and their registration has changed, their address has changed, I need a copy of that new registration. Because when we enter all this data in for the DMV, we have to have the...
Current information.
The current information. And so some people's cars have changed, and we actually have to enter the VIN number for every car. So it's a huge clerical problem. But... And drivers' license numbers go in, too, on this spreadsheet.
Do you happen to know if that'll get me into the HOV lane? If I put that in the... No? Okay.
It will, only if you... Right, only if...
We thank you very much. So I'll make a continuance of this, so Ms. Squires could come on June 15th. Would that be a good day?
That sounds good, the day after Flag Day.
Perfect. Second.
Hey, I also, before I end...
Before you go, we have a motion and a second to continue to June 15th. Go ahead.
Okay, June 15th. Could you put me first on the agenda?
No, but go ahead.
I just thought I'd ask.
Certainly.
I also want to congratulate Mary Perella, who's going to be our interfaith service speaker at St. Elizabeth's Church.
Hey, Mary, nice job.
This just announced last night at the Fourth of July meeting.
Congratulations.
And that will be on June 26th. So thank you, Mary, for accepting, and we look forward to your speech. And I will see you on June 15th. Mike, do you have anything to say?
Mike Riley, 21 Sania Lane. Only that I don't really have anything to add to what Judy said, other than they make great gifts. Mother's Day's coming up, probably want to get a plate for your mom. But other than that, I don't think I have anything.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great one.
So we have a motion and a second to continue. Go ahead, Tony.
Just if it makes it easier, Judy, you can have them drop off the applications here as well, if it fits any assistance, you know.
Oh, okay.
Not only they can pick them up here, but also drop them off, you know, as a drop point.
Drop them off here. Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And we do have them in the little holder over there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor to continue?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next correspondent is from Wayne Zina, the fundraising committee chair of the Hydralian Engine Host Company Number One and others, informant council of fundraising event to be held on August 27th.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the fundraising event on August 27th at Independence Park.
And it's just a receive and file?
Yeah, I think it's really a receive and file, because even though... I mean, the... All of the parties wanted to make sure the council was well-involved with this and well-aware of everything that was going on. But I'm pretty sure it's gone through the regular approval process. Just we kind of put it on as a precautionary measure, but I don't think it would be necessary for you to be approving all these things. Normally, Walter can do that.
So I retract my motion.
Yes, so I have it on as a receive and file. Great. Thank you. Second for discussion that we've talked about this in the past, and I want to commend the Hides, because we're finally going to have this in our community. Where we have talked in the past about how to bring a food truck festival to Bristol, and it's nice to see that it's finally going to be accomplished for a good cause. So very well organized. I see how you addressed everything, and I just want to commend you.
Gentlemen, this is your two-minute commercials, so go ahead, Mary, before. Wait, Mary?
They can go, and then I'll comment.
All right, so go ahead, gentlemen.
Saturday, August 27th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Independence Park. Tickets are $10. You can purchase them at bfdfoodtruckfundraiser@gmail.com.
Fantastic.
Again, what was that address, please? Thank you.
And will you have them in other local places or just online as it gets closer to the summer?
It's like, we've done a lot of work and a lot of research, and it's amazing how quickly these food trucks book up, I mean, years in advance for major events. So a lot of the local ones, unfortunately, were not able to attend this event, but we have about 10 to 12 food trucks, two of them are local, and the rest are from all over, so.
No, I meant the tickets.
Oh, I apologize.
The email was for tickets, wasn't it?
The email was for tickets. There's also... You're also going to see, now that we have the approval, you're also going to see a Facebook event now. You'll probably see us throughout town at some of the major town events.
You're going to be selling tickets in other places?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I just want to say that I was so happy to read this. And can you tell which part, sentence? Because if you haven't followed, I've been going crazy with alcohol.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I was reading this, and you know, we had earlier in the agenda, we had a whole requirement of like a whole draft of an ordinance of what to do with alcohol. And I'm reading this, and I'm like, oh, gosh, here comes the first group that's going to be asking. Then I got to the sentence, "Considering the family-friendly nature of the food truck fundraiser, this will be an alcohol-free event." I go, I'm in love with you guys. Thank you so much. I think that is, as such, there will be no alcohol available for purchase. I think that's important, because I think we get to the point in Bristol, like every meeting is consumed by alcohol issues. And it's almost like, can people go anywhere or do anything without having a drink in their hand? And so I think this is a great example of that. So thank you so much for not only doing it, but highlighting it, because it is a family event, and it's like a food truck festival, and you know, so I think that's great. Thank you so much for that.
Not only is it a fundraiser for us, but it is another town event to bring the town together and just have a great day. So, look forward to seeing everybody there.
And more importantly, thank you for your service as volunteer fireman.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To a motion to receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is from the Director of Community Development regarding the 2016 RIDEM Recreation Acquisition Development Grants. Request Council Authorization to Submit Grant Applications for Waterfront Boardwalk Park.
Well, Diane, this is a much better match ratio than some we've had. And maybe we can get a grant for some of the match, too. Maybe.
Tell us about it, Diane.
Okay. I'm not sure I can commit to a match.
Oh, that's okay. Tell us about the project.
But, so this is basically a proposal to the state D E M, and I'm working with Walter Burke and Ed Tanner on this project. We are looking to connect the missing link of the downtown boardwalk, which will take the boardwalk, complete the boardwalk from the north side of Rockville Park, behind the Ever Ready Fire Station, through the other waterfront lot that required, to the state street dock.
That's right.
So that's, to the state street dock.
Yeah.
So that's what this proposal is for. And I think it's a great, you know, application for this grant, promotes, you know, public access to the waterfront. Again, it's creating that missing link in the downtown boardwalk, which is all part of the waterfront master plan. So we did get some pricing, which you see, you have a late memo. We've been working on the budget very closely. We've met with Tony and Julie to just refine the numbers. And so what you see before you is the budget and the match at twenty percent of the project would be about eighty-one thousand four hundred dollars.
Well, Diane, I'm in support of this project. I think it fits in nicely with the whole Maritime Center and the big draw to our waterfront that we know we love down there. So I would make a motion that we authorize, the authorization to submit the grant application for the waterfront boardwalk project.
Thank you.
And we hope you get it.
Thank you.
We know it's no guarantee, right?
Second.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Third. Is there any other conversation? No? I think, I agree that, I think it's wonderful. I also think it's wonderful if you're not a boater, if you're, you just want to experience the waterfront and never get your feet wet.
Exactly.
It's a great way of doing it. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Similarly, the director provides a request for an authorization to submit a grant for the Leach and Square, also known as Loafus Corner Project. You also have some additional cost estimate provided as a late item.
Does this include reflectors?
Include what?
No.
No. Even with this one-
What was it?
Just like the other one, it doesn't hurt to submit these grants. I mean, if we get it, then we go from that juncture. So, so with that said, with this one, even though it's a smaller scale, kind of similar with the eighty percent to twenty percent, but even at the end, when we owe six thousand dollars, there might be some in-kind, potential in-kind, but we could get to that. So it might cost us nothing. So this is a good one. So I'm going to make a motion that you go and submit for this grant as well.
Thank you very much.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say that I think we've got to be careful in something like that, that we don't disturb the present function of it. In other words, if this could truly beautify it and make it better, fine. But if it modifies it so much that the present rather important usage of it is diminished, then that would be a failure.
Right, we agree. And I've been working with Walter and he's been in communication with the folks who use it and the veterans especially. And it is sort of like a Bristol outdoor living room, if you will. It's really well-used.
Exactly.
And there's a lot of people who take advantage of that spot. Yes. Thank you. And the historic district, which we'll be presenting the concept to them as well.
Be careful some crazy architect doesn't destroy what we have.
Right. We're trying to keep it very simple and basic and just recognizing that, you know, we want good access, ADA access, nice planters, and just, you know, improve the area, but not to over.
The only thing about, like, the bricks that you're showing here, I mean, to me, that, for the population that uses it, that might be a dangerous thing because they don't always stay very flat.
Right. Those are permeable pavers. And if you look, it's hard to see, but there's a picture on the lower left. It's all going to be at grade.
Yeah.
So there'll be a, like, a painted line edging and then it'll all be at grade.
What's nice about that, right, Diane? It's the drainage. I mean, it's going to soak up that water and get rid of it.
They don't get, like, bricks that they're just going to be bombing.
My understanding is they don't, but we'll look into that, Mary. We agree that we don't want that to be-
No, it doesn't.
It's okay.
We don't want that to be a problem.
It's okay.
I mean, for the most part, it's a great plan. It's going to look nice. And for the most part, things are quiet. I just don't want to entertain, like Walter said, it's a historic district. We've got businesses down there. And I'm going to go to the chief on this one, is we just don't want it to become a hangout where it affects our businesses. There have been complaints in the past, and I just want to be on the record that we just want to be respectful to our visitors that are walking around those corners, our businesses that are there, and have a mindful eye along with the police department. And when you go there, to just be respectful. That's all.
So we have a motion and a second to go forward with this grant application. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
And if that were not enough, we have item seven, where the recreation director is requesting council support of RIDEM grant applications for Independence Park projects.
This is an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, and it's an eighty, eighty-twenty match. However, I don't know why I have to say that. It's an eighty-twenty match. However, we, I've been told that the match can come from another grant, Fish and Wildlife. So there won't be any outpouring or any need for town.
So I'll make the motion then to approve this one.
One's contingent on the other, though, right?
Oh, third.
You need both, right?
Yeah. I need, yes. And we're going to try and apply for the Fish and Wildlife money. And it's basically the same design that we did a few years ago, that the Maritime Center took that money with everybody's agreement on that. So now it's another grant round, so the opportunity strikes itself again, and we want to apply for this. We had a meeting Tuesday with D E M to discuss it on site. However, one of the workers was out sick that day, so we postponed it. It'll be next week. But the grant is due by the end of the month, and Diane and I are going to be working fervently to get all these grants put together and out so that we can-
Well, this is wonderful. That's a well-used park. That's a well-used ramp. That's just, it's-
This makes a lot of sense.
And the difference between the two grants, the grants are going to represent enough money so that we can really do a decent job-
And run the ramp further out, of course.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
The ramp will be quadrupled in size and the boardwalk going out will be bigger.
Excuse me.
There'll be a transient dock there and the parking will be better. It'll all be cleaned up. It won't affect the Independence Park as the park is concerned. It may probably redo the boardwalk in front of Independence Park, which really needs to be up there.
Yeah, those boards have gotten pretty bad.
So we can probably tie that right into it.
Beautiful.
Walter, this makes a lot of sense. And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the grant submission for the Independence Park project.
And we'll present the design before we go out to bitter.
Holsey, we're so quick to second because this one's free. So, and I'm a big fan, too. We're all on board on this one. So we have a motion and a second to move forward with this grant application. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item I eight is from Cindy Elder, the executive director of Cogswell Farm Museum. I believe she's doing this in cooperation with the Parks and Recreation Department. Request Council Support for Resolution Regarding the Green Economy Bond Issue. Draft Resolution is provided.
Mike, did you have an opportunity to review this resolution?
I did. I did.
And could you give us your feedback? Is there any concerns?
Basically, this is something that the voters will be voting on in November. So it's a bond issue that they are asking, the organization is asking you to go on record being in support of it, and so that they can say that the Bristol Town Council would like to see its residents vote in support of this.
Well, I'm in support. I make a motion.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a resolution saying you support it and-
I make a motion to support the resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? I certainly will add two cents. I think that if you look through this, there's, actually, Councilman Stewart and I were speaking a little earlier, and the brownfield remediation and economic development, stormwater, let me say it again, stormwater pollution prevention program. Talk about things that are absolutely on our radar. So we have a motion and a second to sign this resolution in support of the Green Economy Bond. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
But ask council to please sign the document.
You want all of us or just the individual?
Yeah. The next item, similarly, the economic development coordinator is asking council to approve a proclamation recognizing a National Small Business Week. I believe Ms. Farmer has a brief presentation for you.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. This is just a resolution or proclamation that came across my desk from communication with the Small Business Administration. Every year, the President of the United States proclaims a week to recognize small businesses, which we all could probably agree is the fabric of our economy, especially in Bristol and throughout the United States. So I would just like to take a moment to recognize all of the small businesses that we have in Bristol that really, without them, Bristol wouldn't be here. So I would just like to take a moment to recognize everybody from our retailers, our restaurateurs, service, the service industry, and especially all of our manufacturers tonight. And I present the proclamation in front of you, just in support of Small Business Week and just supporting all of our local businesses.
Well, thank you very much for presenting and taking the time tonight. And we are in the middle of this week for Small Business Week, so we just have our thoughts with all the businesses as well.
Timing is apropos.
And like you said, Michael, going over this, it's pretty self-explanatory with the verbiage. So I'll make a motion that we sign this proclamation and resolution that you set forth for this council.
Thank you.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Passing around a lot of paper here this evening.
Okay. The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is item I ten. This is regarding the previously discussed 2016 road improvement program.
So just for an update, the last meeting that we convened here at the council chamber, when we talked about the road program, we were also talking about the seventeen-million-dollar bond referendum and talking amongst colleagues about and with the administration going forward with the road program for this summer. The monies and the appropriations, there was questionability. So we further took it up at our meeting last week. And we are going to go forward. The bids are out. We should expect those on our May twenty-fifth meeting, along with the proper accommodations through our treasure and what we discussed going forward for this project. So I just want to convey that to the residents, that we will be addressing the road program this year and actually having conversations of what would be appropriated. And we already discussed going forward, that benchmark of how much we want to go going forward in the years coming. Also, talking with the administration and Director McBride in the past about the pothole killer project. That conversation has come up again, and we're in discussions of meeting with them to assess how we go about, I know we had a mild winter, but, you know, the cost efficiency of what it costs us to do potholes now versus if we can use manpower and other aspects and, you know, have cost savings, having this outfit do it. That's another conversation we're going to have to do with the roads. And I just wanted to update the residents that it is going to be going. And I think it's very important we do because these are projects. We know that we're dealing with a lot, as we said, but as a team together, we know that we have to keep this town going and the roads and drainage and all the projects that we put a lot of effort into the capital plan with the administration and our department heads and throughout the budget process. We just want to keep the town moving forward, so. Thank you.
May I have a motion on that?
This is a receiving file, right?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion, receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next item is from the Coastal Resources Management Council, informing the council of a public notice of an application for residential voting facility at ten King Philip Avenue. The deadline for the hearing is May twelfth.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Similarly, another public hearing on a different project with the deadline being May fifteenth.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is from the solicitor, providing certain information regarding lease of real property. The council agreed at the beginning of the meeting to hold that, at least preliminary part of that discussion in executive session. The next item is bid number eight forty-one for EMS and Fire Department Services billing. You have four proposals submitted. The first is from Comstar Incorporated of Raleigh, Massachusetts. And I'm just going to read the first three years. The first year is four percent, second year four percent, third year four percent. The next is from New England Medical Billing Incorporated of Rumford, Rhode Island. Similarly, for first, second, and third year, four percent for each year. The next is from the Dawson Group of East Providence, first, second, and third year, six percent per year. And the third is from Automated Medical Billing Systems of Fall River, Massachusetts, with three percent for each of the three years.
Chief DeMell, did you have anything that you wanted to add on this or share?
The only thing I'll add to it is I'm beginning the review process on the submissions. The EMS billing almost provides revenue that equals about seventy-five percent of our operating budget. So that's a good return, and that's, return has increased quite a bit, I think about thirty percent, almost thirty percent since we've gone to this particular vendor.
Wow.
So the only thing I'll expand on is that it's more than just a percentage. You know, if you bid one percent, the revenue was reduced by fifty. I'm not making much money on that.
Fair enough.
And this will also tie in as I make some changes to the proposed ordinance for the fire side of the billing house. Keep in mind that this bid will cover both. So we won't have, as we had in the past, we had two vendors billing the two different things out. This will bring it all into one house for one commission. For example, the fire, the previous fire commission was eighteen percent until we were billing out. So this will bring it down substantially on that end of it. So.
Fantastic.
That's it.
Thank you, chief. What's the motion, please? Refer to the-
Town administrator and to the fire chief, to act in the best interest of the town.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the periodic report provided by Alan Klepper, a member of the Bristol County Water Authority, providing their information for May.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then we have some solicitor items. You have from the assistant town solicitor and others regarding the recent Rhode Island Supreme Court decision, attorney's fees for zoning applications.
We just bring this to your attention because our Rhode Island Supreme Court has now stated that if I'm a zoning board, or for that matter, probably a planning board, makes a decision that's adverse to the applicant, and the decision is not backed up with, by substantial evidence. The possibility is out there that a court may assess attorney's fees against the agency or the town. We are at all of those board meetings as your attorney. It is our job to make sure that any decision is backed up by the evidence substantially. I would like to think this will never happen in Bristol. I just, we just want you to know that this is now something we have to be super aware of, and we'll make sure that if there's any question, we'll ask the board to wait, allow us to draft a decision, and come back and vote on it at a subsequent meeting so that there's no issue. It's just a receiving file.
And this has been reviewed with the, has this been reviewed with the zoning board?
I'm sorry.
Has this been reviewed with them yet?
If it hasn't, it will. Has it, Diane? Because I have, I was in the last meeting.
We did disseminate it to the board members.
Great.
The last meeting has to be, they didn't meet, they didn't have form, but they will be briefed in June.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, that's a great explanation. We appreciate. Better understanding, yeah.
So is there a motion, receive and file?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Then we have the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
April twenty-third was Keep Bristol Clean Day, last Saturday, a couple Saturdays ago now, oh my goodness. Phenomenal turnout. It was a rainy, rainy, rainy day, but about a hundred and fifty- Phenomenal turnout, it was a rainy, rainy, rainy day, but about a hundred and fifty people signed up, and there's actually more than that. DPW does a great job facilitating this every year, and bringing it to our attention, to the public's attention. I actually grabbed a couple of bags myself, the, my wife and kids were out of town, so I walked up and down Franklin Street, and a couple of officers came by a couple of times to make sure that I wasn't getting hit by any cars, and I appreciate that, I really do. So it was a good event, and it's a wonderful event to be involved in, and if you don't know what to do next year, if you see this come around, just go over to the DPW, they'll give you a set of gloves, a couple of bags, and go pick up trash and make Bristol a cleaner place. The opening day for the King Philip Little League was last weekend, was a nice event, as it always is, and it's an important event, having our kids involved in sports, whatever that sport may be, and just a team sport, brings a lot to them in future. In fact, the Administrator, the Chief and I were recently speaking yesterday about how sports can actually really affect you in the future, in the sense of making you, whether it's in your professional life or personal life, of, you know, achieving greatness, we'll put it that way. So it was a great event, and we always, we always enjoy being there. I don't know if you know this or not, but we have so many wonderful services in the town, and there's a, there's a few free ones, and typically, we talk about other things, but the library, I don't know if you knew this or not, but mobile devices are going to make the library obsolete. Well, that's a myth. There's a high number of people who don't know how to use their smartphones and tablets. Did you know that you can go to the library and get a class that's free on how to use your phone better, to use less data while your phone? So, did you know that they're open twenty-four hours a day? And you can download a book from their website at any point, and read it at the gym, your daily walk, or listen to an audiobook? Do I sound like a commercial here? And they're there when you need them the most. If your printer breaks, you can go use theirs.
Now you do.
Yeah, all right. Did you know that you can bring a cup of coffee in there, in certain places, and actually sit and read a book in quiet? So if you haven't gone to the library in a while, it's a relevant place to be, it's a wonderful place to be, and our particular library is absolutely beautiful. So take a moment, go over there with your cup of coffee, with your tablet, I love tablets, so, and enjoy it. Last thing I'll leave you with is that we are in the process of getting legislative approval for a bond, a seventeen million dollar bond for the town. That's not spending the money, let me be really clear on that, and we're going to say this a lot, is that, that is authorization to spend the money when it's appropriate. Those monies you'll see on the ballot in November are to help us do things that we really need to do. We've been talking about roads tonight. There'll be money for roads for a five-year project, is what we're hoping for. There's money for drainage. What I talk about not only is ten-yard brook phase two, but there's a lot of drainage issues in the town. This will help us pay for some of those costs. That ten-yard brook, we've said this a lot of times, but this bond will allow the town to be ready when federal dollars are ready and state dollars are ready. So you've heard us talk a lot this evening about what matching is, so we need that money ready to go when an opportunity presents itself. So you're going to see us, and you're going to hear us talk a lot about this, because it's an important bond, and it's not spending money tomorrow, next week. It's spending money when it's appropriate, so it's a, I think we called it a preapproval, if you will. So it'll be there when we're ready to use it and when we believe it's appropriate. And to that end, there is bond money that we have not spent yet. It is earmarked for certain projects that we have, but we're not going to spend this money until it's appropriate, until it's budgetable. We're not just going to go out there and do those things. But we need this, and we're hoping for voter approval, because it'll allow us to take advantage of a lot of things. You heard a couple this evening, that we won't be able to do without matching funds, and this will help us get there. Thanks, everyone.
Mr. Sweeney.
Well, the Maritime Center is opening tomorrow. How exciting is that? That's pretty, pretty cool. We've, big accomplishment. So if you're out there and you have nothing to do tomorrow night, come down to the Maritime Center to support the Arts Night, the fifth anniversary. So it's the Maritime Center tomorrow, Thursday, May fifth, from six to eight. I hope you guys have some time to come down and take a look at it. The building is beautiful, it's gone through a lot of changes, and I think you'll be very, very pleased where your tax dollars are going. I was talking to Representative Kenneth Marshall and Walter Burke about Colt State Park, and it's very interesting, when you come into Colt State Park, there's a set of lights, streetlights, as you go down to Quinta Gamblin, and many of you probably know that they're, they're not working at all. And we actually own that road, so we own the road going in, but the state owns the road going out. I hope I have that correct, Walter. And so long and the short of it, what we want to do is change those lights, those broken lights, to LED lights. So they would, hopefully, we would like to combine that project that we're doing to transfer, we're going to obviously change the town over to LED lighting, include those set of lights in there, because Quinta Gamblin has been expanding, a lot more activities and fun events that are, that go on into the night, and we want to make sure those streets are lit, and also for, Chief, you'll be pleased for safety. I mean, obviously, we want to make, keep sure people are safe while they're walking on that street. So just want to let my colleagues know, let the residents know, that it's a project that we're working on to get that done, so.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Have a great Mother's Day to all those moms.
Yeah.
Where would we be without moms, right?
I wouldn't be here.
Come on, I know, that's true. Have a great night.
Well, it is very dark down there, so I'm glad that's getting, getting worked on. I know it's been in a long-term plan for that, for Asylum Road. You know, my only thing I have is to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day. My mother, Bernice, she might be still watching, I'm not sure, but, this is, so happy Mother's Day to her, and happy Mother's Day to the moms here, Jackie, St. Jackie back there, the mothers and grandmothers, and Julie somewhere back, and I don't know if Jenna's still here, but that's, I think, is it in the current room? So happy Mother's Day to everybody, and that is it. Thank you, good night.
Mr. Stewart.
Well, Councilwoman, that was terrific news that was brought upon us tonight. So congratulations once more on you being the interfaith speaker for this year's Fourth of July celebrations, well deserved. Along with that, yes, happy Mother's Day to my mother, Donna, along with all the mothers, and may they have a wonderful day. And we have concluded our budget series, I know we've been talking about it for a while, and we do work very hard and diligently amongst all of us, day in and day out, to make sure we make those decisions to, like I said, move our town forward, and we always welcome your feedback, and that's why we're here. Thank you, Mike Davis, Archie Martins, everyone who came out tonight, everyone tuning in at home, and that's all I got, too. So have a great night.
Mr. Harrisaw.
Just a couple of things. First of all, Lou, I suppose you're not surprised to hear this, but it seemed to me there were a few too many late items in this docket, and we ought to continue to try to get the recommendations into the regular docket if we can. Is that exacerbated by your early deadline?
No, no, I think, I think it was kind of the perfect storm, to be fair to everybody, because we had, you know, in the middle of preparing the, the deadline for the agenda just happened to be the same day as the election. So, you know, even getting out the request for the recommendations was delayed because we had to, obviously, the election had to take priority over that. So I think that the amount that you saw this time, it was, I think it was a little bit unusual. You know, not, it would be really, really nice if everybody started coming in like tomorrow for the next agenda, but for some reason, the word is out there.
They want it fresh, Lou. They wait, they want it fresh.
So everybody likes to come in, there was a couple of applications that came in at the tick of the clock to four o'clock on Tuesday. So, you know, if we could get the public to sort of understand that we accept these, these requests throughout the month, every day of the week, and they can come in any time with them, I think it would make everyone's life easier, but I think the, the election did, did cloud the whole.
Well, Lou, with respect, you know I don't like excuses, but I think you have a pretty good one in this case. I'd just like to make a couple of more comments about the cleaning of Bristol. I think it's wonderful that the sweep is into action, and that the vacuum for the sidewalks is coming, but I'd just like to suggest that, much as we'd love to immediately go everywhere in Bristol, obviously, we can't, and we got to schedule it, even if we get to every part of Bristol by the end of the year, that's, that's good. So I only suggest that you try to prioritize it. It may be Monkey Ranch Lane, nice to clean it, but I don't think we have to be too systematic by starting at one end of the town and going to the other. I think you want to pick the bad spots. There's a lot of necessity to work on Wood Street, particularly in the business area near the Kaiser area. State Street's kind of bad, Bradford Street's better because of the schools and everything, and the lower part with the volunteer work done near the Phoenix. But I just think that to make this good project most effective, you should consider getting the DPW to prioritize it, and look at those places that need it the most. And the other thing I'd like to mention about it is, I was observing the other day, not the DPW, but others using blowers. The mention earlier about the problem in the gutters is a real one, because all a blower does is it just moves the stuff we don't want from one place to another, and that's why vacuums are so much better. And we have just purchased, the council amused at this, I said a couple of years ago, I was going to get vacuums, well, I've got two now, and I think I'm going to give one to the town, if you would accept it, Mr. Town Administrator. Would you accept a vacuum if I gave it to you?
I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be handy, and we can use her, you know, to access the curbing.
Well, this was still a promise I made about two years ago, if you'll remember, so better luck than never.
I'd like some interest, please.
I remember you saying two.
Okay. Okay, well, that's all I have, and I'll bring the vacuum in soon.
Thank you.
Town Administrator, agenda items.
Just reiterating, congratulations to Chief Canario for the award. Men who make a difference. It certainly was, was very nice to be there and to be part of the, the honor and the celebration. So I can tell you, he makes a great bartender, a good server, I should say, you know? He had to serve our table, you know, and turn some tips. And he did a good job, he really did. But he had some good stiff competition, though, especially with Lieutenant Governor. Also, the Department of Public Works, Kevin Director McBride and Peter Moran, they visit with our seniors at the Bristol Housing, and to give them some tips on recycling. They spent a couple hours there with them, and demonstrated actually what should be what for recycling, and so they were actually very appreciative. I saw a thank you note coming their way, so that was a very nice gesture for them to do that. Softball opening day will be this weekend, this Saturday, at the Town Beach. Rajum's, Rajum's University also will be holding graduation this weekend. Will be the, the law school, as well as the regular graduation. So congratulations to all of the students, and we certainly appreciate that you've been with us for the last four years. And last but not least, happy Mother's Day. I know, I already mentioned my wife, she's in the back, but also my mother-in-law, who's ninety-three years old, and we certainly love her, she's, she's a bundle. And to all the grandmothers, mothers, and grandmothers, and godmothers as well, because quite often, they play the role as well. So God bless them. Thank you.
The motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to forty-six, forty-two, forty-six, five-eight-two litigation involving the Bristol Warren Regional School District and Quip Board versus Bristol, and also to convene pursuant to forty-two, forty-six, five-eight-five lease of real property, Quidos Shellfish and Restaurant.
So moved.
Second.
Happy Mother's Day to my mom and my wife. I forgot that. All in favor?
And my wife, too.
Yeah.
I forgot that.
All in favor? Any opposed? Good night, everybody.